We are back. And we are now at the council comment section of the meeting agenda. Anybody have any comments? Doug and then Terry and then Colleen.
Yes. Tomorrow night in Ward Six at the New York Shurkak Center is a public meeting on the recommendations of the traffic study that was done in Ward Six. So, everybody in the ward is welcome to join city staff at seven o'clock at the Rec Center. And we will discuss the recommendations made in that report and hear from citizens on anything in addition to that that they would like to bring up. The second item is we welcome the Tijuana Mexican Cafe to Tacoma Park. They opened a new restaurant at the end of the summer on 949 University Boulevard East. And the owners have approached myself and city staff about applying for a liquor license. I met with the owners and city staff last week and found them to be, you know, very fine people and successful business owners. They have two other locations in the area, both in Silver Spring, oh, sorry, one in Silver Spring and the other in Rockville. Both have liquor licenses. One has been open for ten years and there have been no incidents concerning that license. They're considered to be great neighbors and have an excellent product. So, it's a terrific addition to have. And we will be going and contacting some of the people who will remember the difficulties with the previous tenant in that same address. It was another Latin American restaurant and they got the license pulled because of a series of problems and difficulties there. And so, you know, the same group of individuals, the neighbors who had such a hard time and were put to such inconvenience, not to mention danger, by the abuse of the privilege of having that license will be contacted and will set up some meetings with the owner of the restaurant and the neighbors and the other stakeholders there to make sure that everyone is in accord, that this would be a positive step for the neighborhood. And, you know, I'm quite comfortable with their track record in other places and think that this can work here, but we do have a little bit of work to do with the neighbors before this goes forward.
If I can just add to that real quickly, that I met with the owner of that business today and I think today was the first day of their lunch buffet.
Six ninety-five. And they're the only restaurant in the area to have mole sauce, which is, you know, quite a complicated thing made with chocolate and it's delicious. I haven't been there yet, but at six ninety-five, I'm sure I'll be a regular attendee.
Terry?
Thank you. Some people may be surprised not to see Pat Lovelace with us tonight in the audience. And I just wanted to let you all know that he is suffering some health problems related to his heart. His doctor has been adjusting his medications and he should have heart surgery one day soon and be back with us after that. But I understand he still went to the peace rally last week, so he's still out there fighting for those things that he believes in. Mayor, I had one question that residents ask me periodically and I thought maybe you could give us an update on the reconstruction of the fire station?
I've given up making pronouncements on when anything will happen with that project because I've been proven wrong too many times. What I understand is that they are talking about having the groundbreaking in March.
Okay. And what was the last holdup? Do you know?
Things like it took so long their permits expired.
Okay. So, they're suffering from the same bureaucratic problems that everybody else?
They're doing it to themselves.
That's the exciting part.
Yes.
Okay. I won't ask any more questions. Thank you for the update.
They're all in a similar vein, all the possible answers. Colleen?
Well, I want to say hello to our audience in Boulder, Colorado, that's watching on streaming video. So, I guess I'd like to start with crime. So, I'd like to talk about crime on the listers in my neighborhood, both in Forest Park and in Saskia. And Saskia, the South Sligo Citizens Association, which encompasses most of the Forest Park area, is having a meeting at the community center on Thursday in the Azalea Room at seven thirty. And so, I won't be able to attend the MML tour of the county nine-one-one system. It's kind of disappointing because I wanted to go to that. But if folks are concerned about crime, I believe that the police chief is going to be at the meeting, so I recommend that you come and hear what the police department has to say about protecting yourself in the neighborhood. I am going to be absent from the council meeting next week, so if I have any constituents out there who have concerns, if you could address them to the mayor for the week or if the mayor is not available, you can certainly address them to the city manager's office. And the last thing is back to the issue that we talked about a little bit before with what is the county's responsibility and what is the city's responsibility? And does the county really know what the difference between those two things are? The last time this came up was an issue about whether or not people in the city could participate in the tree purchase program that the county was operating. And this time it's coming up around the paving of Sligo Creek Parkway. And I sent another email to Valerie Irvin, who's been, you know, very responsive and we've been talking about this back and forth some, but it seems like the county paved Sligo Creek Parkway up to somewhere near the city line and then stopped. And when I talked to them last year, they were going to pave all the way to the county line. And they were going to start at the upper end and they paved and they did. And they paved and they did exactly what they said they were going to do and they kept paving and then things got transferred to the county's public works department and they still kept paving. And I've been waiting and waiting because they said they wouldn't re-stripe the crosswalks or fix the, you know, the twenty-one mile an hour speed humps until they paved. And then sometime at the end of the year, they stopped and they, at the end of the last fiscal year, and they have not continued on into the city. And it begs the question of whether or not they know, as I think they frequently don't, that they have responsibilities within the boundaries of Tacoma Park. I think this issue recently came up related to community preparedness on our discussions as well, but I mean, this is just another example. So, I think, you know, we're continuing to communicate with Valerie, but I think this is kind of an ongoing issue for us and maybe we could, I don't know if we should all address this together through our meetings with the county. I know we're going to have a meeting with MML or our chapter meeting where we also meet with the county folks and to, I don't know if other cities are having this problem, but maybe we should escalate a little bit because it's kind of frustrating. Plus, I want them to pave the crosswalk or to paint the crosswalks.
And I'm sure that Park and Planning knows that it's their responsibility to pave Sligo Creek Parkway.
You're sure? They don't police it very well.
I'll answer with the same answer I had on the fire department project.
Okay. That's my two cents.
Josh?
Just very briefly, there's been a lot of talk on the listers in my neighborhood about Old Town and lack of restaurants, vacant shops, lack of economic vitality. I just want to let people know that on February thirteenth at Victory Tower, I think it's at seven o'clock, I'm sure I'll mention it again next week, there is an event sponsored by Wacko and the Old Town Residents Association as well as OTPA to-
And Victory Tower?
At Victory Tower to have an open forum to discuss the issues. You know, it is complex. There's issues around density and attracting the right type of entrepreneurs and the right types of businesses, landlords being cooperative. So, there's no one silver bullet solution to the issue, but I would encourage you to come and discuss and help work on the issue on February thirteenth.
I've got seven quick items. I wanted to note the death of State Senator Gwendolyn Britt on Saturday. I'm sure many people saw that in the newspaper. She was the state senator for Prince George's County District Forty-seven and that included Langley Park. And she was a wonderful advocate for all the issues in Langley Park. And she was also a wonderful advocate for many human rights issues. She was going to be the lead sponsor for the marriage bill in Maryland and if anybody could have pulled it off, it was her. So, a lot of people are really sad and I'd like to express our condolences to her family and friends. And I think it would be entirely appropriate if we had some resolution expressing those condolences so that we can send it on to them because she was very special. So, we will do that and put that on a future agenda. There's also another death that just happened. Sharon Becker, who is the young woman, young mother, who was the Spanish teacher for city staff, city staff has Spanish classes and she came here and was very helpful in that role and she died in her sleep. And so, wonderful people are dying a lot lately and I hope it stops. Won't stop completely, but I'm feeling inundated with these. We have another agenda item later tonight, a presentation to somebody else who was very helpful and special to Tacoma Park. In the status and information that went out on Friday, there was one item that has already attracted some notice and I just wanted to be sure and point it out to people that Washington Suburban Sanitary Commission has two public hearings coming up and they're proposing to add a twenty dollar per month infrastructure renewal fee to residents' bills. So, that would be a hundred and twenty dollars a year plus a-
Two hundred and forty dollars.
Sorry, two hundred and forty dollars a year plus a nine and a half percent basic rate increase. So, I think it would be very helpful if we would like to consider expressing our opinion to WSSC either with a submitted written resolution and/or testimony. If anybody might be available to do that, we will put that on the agenda so that we can do something. And if anybody wants to represent the city and present the testimony, the two public hearings are Wednesday, February sixth at seven thirty in Largo or Thursday, February seventh at seven thirty in the county council office building in Rockville. So, if you want to, if anybody wants to do that, let me know and we will also put something for that on a future agenda in the next week or two. Also, the county Martin Luther King celebration is a week from today and the city has in the past been a co-sponsor of that event in Rockville. And I was asked if I could go represent the city, but I'm not available and I just asked the mayor pro tem and he is available. So, or if we can let the county executive know that there will be somebody there from the city. It's, there's a community, there's a, what's the word I want? Program at the Bethesda North Marriott Conference Center on Rockville Pike from twelve-thirty until three. And there's a musical celebration and tribute at Strathmore from four until six. And that's a week from today, Monday, and the council meeting will be Tuesday, the In my role as a member of the MML Legislative Committee, we are now in, the legislature's now in session in Annapolis and we are now meeting probably at least weekly. And one of the things that we get is potential bills of interest to MML. I've got a binder that I'm going to be putting them in. I've already got the first quarter inch worth. And there may be some bills that MML doesn't want to take a position on that we might want to. So, I will try and make that available, let you know what some of those might be. And if there's any particular interest that you have, you can either look at the bill online or I have hard copies here and I'll try and remember to bring that to council meetings so if anybody wants to look at it. Of the first, I don't remember how many it was, I think there were seven or eight at our meeting last week, there were at least four of them where I thought, oh, that could affect us. So, a number of interesting bills going in in Annapolis. Councilmember Clay brought up about getting some information and maybe having a little discussion with the county or the county council. I was reminded that when former councilmember Tom Perez represented District Five, that he came to the county, to the city council on a somewhat regular basis and provided us with a briefing of what county issues were and it was a chance for us to relay to him any of our particular concerns. I have contacted councilmember Irvin and we will be setting up an opportunity for her to give a briefing. And finally, I just want to let you know that I was approached about signing on to a mayor's statement on global warming that is going to be issued in conjunction with the President's State of the Union address later this month. And I let them know that I would be happy to sign that on behalf of the city. So, that will hopefully get some publicity in a week or two when the State of the Union addresses. Any other council comments? Dan?
I'll briefly say that crime is an issue in Ward Three as well, particularly in the Pinecrest neighborhood and on Sycamore where there have been five burglaries in the last couple of weeks. And Chief Rucucci will come to the Pinecrest meeting on Thursday, the twenty-third, next week. And they'll also consider traffic issues at that meeting. Chief Rucucci will come to Sycamore Avenue sometime in the not-too-distant future as well. And SS Carroll is working on issues at Tacoma Junction, so I'll have more to report on that as that proceeds.
Next item is additional agenda items and agenda scheduling update. We have one additional agenda item that was put on after the agenda was mailed, which is item eight, discussing the process to develop recommendation on the Pine Branch Pool. And that's the last item on our agenda. And I just wanted to alert my colleagues that on the current agenda, it's been pointed out by councilmember Wright that we could potentially combine agenda items four, five, and six on this evening's agenda in a future agenda into a consent agenda item. So, if you have any particular feelings about whether we should or shouldn't go that route, let me know. I would be inclined to do so, remembering that we can always ask to remove any item from the consent agenda. And the next item is adoption of minutes. We have minutes for November nineteenth and twenty-sixth in front of us. We are not going to be considering the December third minutes this evening. Does anybody want to move approval?
Move.
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any names? It's time for a public comment period for anybody who wants to address any items that are not on this evening's regular agenda. I don't think there's anybody out there who's going to do that. Unless somebody wants to step forward, I don't see a likely candidate. So, we'll move on to the city manager's comments.
Thank you. Two brief items this evening. Friday evening, I sent an email to the council outlining some proposed closed sessions and administrative function sessions in the weeks to come. If you've not already done so, if you could please RSVP to the city clerk so we know if those dates are workable. I also wanted to mention to the council that when the mayor and I met last Tuesday, I had asked him to give some consideration to scheduling a time for the council to do its goal-setting session or establishing council priorities, somewhat along the same lines that councilmember Simmons was alluding to, I believe, last week.
You're neglecting to note that I had that as my number one item to discuss.
We both did. We said number one item. So, anyway, the mayor and I had kicked around a few dates and we were looking at possibly having the priority-setting session on an off-council meeting night, just because these sessions do tend to get rather lengthy. And we were looking, mayor, I believe it was the last week of January, possibly either the twenty-ninth, thirtieth, or thirty-first. I will send a follow-up email to the council, but if you could kind of keep an eye out for that and let the mayor and I know if those dates would work, I would appreciate it. That's it, unless there's any questions about any other matter.
Any questions? Oh, we're on schedule. The next item, no, we'll stay ahead of schedule, is a presentation on the results of the resident survey. And Suzanne Ludlow is here to introduce the item and the person who's going to brief us.
That's right. Good evening. We're pleased tonight to have Tom Miller of the National Research Center with us to provide a report on the recently completed Tacoma Park resident survey, which is on the web for anyone to look at. It's also, the results are available in written form in the Tacoma Park Library and at our main desks here in the community center. Wanted to invite the council to come on down into the, into the audience because we do have a PowerPoint presentation. It's relatively short and then I think we can ask and answer questions and things.
And I think even though I liked the format last week where we had the portable microphone down there, we kind of did questions from down there, my sense is we may do them from back up here this week.
That's fine. And here's Tom.
Thank you Suzanne. Thank you, councilmembers. Mayor Williams, I'll wait till you come down to the mop pit. My name is Tom Miller. I'm president of the National Research Center. It's our group that did the citizen survey here in Tacoma Park. And before we go through these results, I want to say something briefly about citizen surveys in general, but first to let you know that even though you've hired an outside consultant to do this, we at National Research Center couldn't accomplish this job ourselves without the help of local staff members to make sure that we're asking the questions that you want to have answered. So, I in particular want to thank Barbara Matthews' staff and Vanita George, who was a direct contact, and Suzanne Ludlow over a period of time, who have helped us be sure that these questions are the kinds of questions and the specific questions that will be useful to you. These kinds of citizen surveys are done more and more across the country. National Research Center does more of these citizen surveys than any other organization. We work with the International City-County Management Association to train city managers and elected officials about using citizen surveys and understanding their meaning. I want to say that these surveys are one window into performance. And while we also have asked a question here in Tacoma Park that's related to policy, most of these questions have to do with residents' perspectives about the overall quality of life here and the quality of service delivery and their civic engagement. These are the kinds of things that you can track over a period of time so that you can test whether the changes in policy that you request and that you put in place actually have the impact on resident perspectives that you're hoping that they do have. You'll see that about twenty-seven percent of residents said that they had been to a city council or other public meeting over the twelve months prior to this survey. The reason I point that particular number out is to direct your attention to the fact that the voice of the public that you hear in this citizen survey and in general, in citizen surveys that are done well, is a different voice than you typically hear. I know that there are other nights when council chambers are filled with folks and other kinds of public meetings that you have and you get to hear from impassioned residents who have the wherewithal and interest to participate in those kinds of in-person meetings. A citizen survey brings in a very different voice. And with seventy-three percent of the folks who participated in this survey not having been to a meeting before, you can be sure that it's a different voice than you have typically heard. Resident perspectives, we feel, are the bottom line in local government. There are other ways to measure performance. They're very important, things like response times and library circulation and pothole repair and those kinds of things. But if you collect trash three times a day and you rolled out a red carpet to do it and people say they're not happy with trash haul, you still have a trash haul problem. And so, understanding the perspectives of your residents is the kind of thing that businesses do and the best businesses in America do pay attention to their consumers' perspectives about the service delivery that's offered. And that, in essence, is what these citizen surveys are for and why they're done on a periodic basis so that you can track outcomes of your interventions. We have the opportunity tonight also to look at some comparisons that we have from a unique database that National Research Center maintains of citizen survey results from around the country. Our database now has about five hundred jurisdictions' results. For any one question, we have as many as two hundred or two hundred and fifty results from different jurisdictions all across the country. And this is particularly important when you take a look at results and you ask people to evaluate the service that you're providing on a scale from excellent to poor. And sixty percent say excellent or good. It's hard to know exactly what that means unless you have some comparative information. So, we feel very strongly that at least to help with the interpretation of these data, having some comparative data to give you a benchmark or a context will be important. And so, we've provided that here. Tonight, we're just going to go through the highlights and this introduction's probably been longer frankly than the actual results I'm going to share with you, but let's go on. But let's go on with a quick overview so that there's not a lot of hand-wringing and worrying about what we're going to be talking about. Generally, these results were positive. You'll find that where we were able to make comparisons, most of the comparisons between Tacoma Park and other jurisdictions, where you look at Tacoma Park, it's above the average of the other jurisdictions for many of these comparisons. And most of the comments that were made, there are open-ended comments. I don't know if you've had a chance to read them. There are about 20 pages of verbatim comments. In my experience, elected officials tend to like these verbatim comments, frankly, even more than we researchers like them, because you actually get to hear the voice of the public, and it's in their words. We've not expurgated it wherever possible. And so in the report itself, you can read all of those comments from your own citizens. In terms of the methods, this is a mailed survey. And by the way, I think you may have questions as we go along, but I understand that because you don't have mics in front of you, and I'm the only one with a mic, you'll hold those. But anywhere along this line or on any of these topics, of course, I'm happy to try to answer questions. This survey was done by mail. It was done in September of 2007. The more contacts one attempts to make with residents selected at random, as these residents were, 3,000 households were selected systematically, that is, without bias. And within the household, a person was selected without bias using something called the birthday method, where we asked the person, the adult in the household who most recently had a birthday, to be the person to respond. The survey was sent out both in English and in Spanish. There were sentences both in French and Amharic that invited people who preferred that language to call a phone number, and that phone number was answered by somebody who was a native speaker and was able to answer questions, or if requested, and I don't believe it was requested, but the intention was, if it were requested, to actually administer the survey in that language, that could be done. So with as many as four contacts, we had first a pre-survey notification. We had the survey coming once, then we had the survey coming again, then finally there was a fourth postcard going back to people, inviting them to respond if they hadn't. So the intention here is to minimize non-response and maximize response. As a result, we had about a 37% response rate. The typical response rates we see with mailed surveys using this methodology is between about 25% and 40%. So this was on the upper end. When the data came back, we weighted them to statistically reflect what was known and what is known about the population characteristics of Tacoma Park. Typically, and in this case as well, you get people who are more likely to be homeowners to respond. People who are more often older respond. And when you have a disproportionate number of those folks, in order to have the right reflection of the demographic profile that Tacoma Park has, you reweight the data so that it is the proper reflection, and that is what we did. And we reweighted by ward, that is where the person lived, which ward of the six wards, and by tenure, which is whether they owned or rented. So now into the results. The first set of results had to do with the overall quality of life. And here you can see, these are ratings on a 100-point scale, where all of the ratings given by residents were converted, so that if somebody checked off excellent, that was weighted 100. If it was good, it got a 67, fair was a 33, and poor is a zero. We averaged all of those, and the average rating for how you rate Tacoma Park as a place to raise children was 69 on that 100-point scale, which is above the average of all the other jurisdictions, and there were over 230 other jurisdictions where this question's been asked, and this is higher than that norm. When asking about the quality of life of the city, similarly, a 69 and above the norm. And similar to the norm was the rating for quality of life in neighborhood. And I think because Tacoma Park is in six different wards, each of the council members who represents each ward can, and so can all of the residents, because this is posted, you can look at a part of this report that is a cross-tabulation of results by ward, also by demographic characteristics, and you can see how these results and where these results differ. We asked about community characteristics, a total of 11 community characteristics, and these were those that were highest rated. The very highest was 74 on that same 100-point scale, above the good mark on average, moving towards excellent, as Tacoma's openness and acceptance of the community toward people of diverse backgrounds. We didn't have a norm for access to municipal buildings, but sense of community also was above the norm. I would say that this question about openness and acceptance, there were 130 jurisdictions across the country where this question was asked, and this rating was second out of all of those. In terms of characteristics, and by the way, there is a section of the report where you can see all of the normative comparisons and the ranking of Tacoma Park compared to others. At the bottom of that list of 11 were these three characteristics: availability of affordable quality housing, shopping opportunities, and ease of travel by bicycle. And these are the same scale ratings that we talked about before. These bottom two, shopping opportunities and quality housing, affordable quality housing, were below the normative comparisons in more than 120 other cities. In the next slide, we examine what residents say about their own sense of safety in the community, walking alone in these various parts of the community, either at day or night. And you can see quite quickly that pretty much on average, people feel much safer in the daytime than they do in the evening. And they feel safer in certain parts of the city than in others. And the University of New Hampshire Crossroads area is the area that residents say, by and large, they feel least safe, whereas the Old Town Junction area is where they feel most safe. We asked about the neighborhood in a set of questions about problems, where residents were able to rate their problems on a scale that went from extreme to major to moderate to minor to not a problem at all. And the one area that had the highest percentage of folks identifying it as at least a moderate problem was crime. And the area with least problems were neighborhood conflicts, where only about 15% felt that that was at least a moderate problem. When we look at city services, the overall rating for city services in Tacoma Park was above the national average with a 64 rating. And trash collection, recycling services were right at the top. Tacoma Park library services also at the top. We only had norms for trash collection and recycling and not for the library services, but those were above the norm, the trash collection and the recycling services. Below the norm and lowest rated were street lighting. We did, was, street lighting. We didn't have a norm for property maintenance and code enforcement, but street repair and maintenance was similar to the norm. And that was one of the lowest graded. But the point there being, you can have a service, and often it is street repair, that is rated lowest, but is not necessarily below the average rating that's given for that service. Certain services get higher ratings than others. Street repair is one of those services that always gets, always I'm overstating it, often gets a low rating. So to be able to see that it compares not unfavorably to other jurisdictions is useful, I think. There's some questions that together we call public trust. These are questions that relate to how welcoming the city is to resident involvement. That rating was above the norm. The overall direction the city is taking and the value of services for the taxes paid, those were similar to the norm. We also asked in the next slide about folks' interaction with city employees. Over half, just little over half of your residents, had some interaction with a city employee in the 12 months prior to doing the survey. I'm always surprised by this somehow, and over half isn't an exceptionally large number, but often across the country, about half of residents have some kind of interaction with a city employee. And I think why that's important is that line staff members, who are the direct contact with your residents, can have a huge impact on what people think of local government. And in this case, your employees are doing a very good job in representing you. These are the ratings, and for courtesy and knowledge, they're above the norm, and for overall customer service and responsiveness, they're similar to the norm. We didn't have a norm for availability. There were some specific questions asked about the police department and how effective residents felt that the police department was. And overall, about 77% of residents felt that the police department is somewhat or very effective here. And those people who were not victims of crime in the prior 12 months had a slightly higher perspective, better perspective about the police than those who were victims of crime. But even those who were victims of crime, 64% said that the police were either somewhat or very effective. About 40% of folks actually had contact with the police. We didn't ask them what the contact was, but we did ask them what the quality of that contact was, and 79%, almost 80%, said that it was excellent or good. About half of them wrote suggestions for improvement, and most of those suggestions had to do with having more visibility or contact with the police department, which is better news than the opposite. The policy question that we broached with your public had to do with the community gymnasium, and there was considerable support for it in principle, with 83%, roughly in all wards having a majority supporting this plan for a gymnasium in the community center. And then we continued to look at the decline in that support, which frankly is not unique to Tacoma Park. It's a willingness-to-pay question, and generally, things go in this direction, but you never know exactly where the thresholds are or the cutoff is. And you can look at the separate ward reports to see if there's a difference from one ward to another. And generally speaking, the wards had similar perspectives about this. Overall, there was a same level, very high level of support, and the majority still supported, even if there was going to be a tax of as much as $50 a year on a house assessed at $400,000 across all of the wards. After that, and although there were differences, there was a majority across all the wards. And then the support declined incrementally as the dollar value went up toward the taxes. Finally, this slide is just to remind you to take a look at, if you're interested, those direct quotes from your respondents. There were about close to 400 folks who took the time to respond when we asked in the very last question, is there anything else you'd like to say? And this covered a wide variety of topics, and I think you'll find it very interesting. But these are some of the, just to give a flavor, "I love Tacoma Park. It's my home. My family enjoys the neighborhood and activities we all participate in. Our neighbors are caring and the best." The largest percentage of the comments were positive in that regard, but not all of them were. They covered a variety of topics. Some of them supported these topics, taxes and construction and business, and others were not happy with things. "I would like to see better litter control and use of regulations to see that people keep up the appearance of their property. I'm concerned about high taxes. I feel Tacoma Park is proactive city, responds to input." Some people said they were happy to get the survey. Some people said they were unhappy that you spent money on the survey. But, so there's a wide variety of perspective that's expressed here. That's the summary. I'm happy to take questions when you've relocated.
Okay. Thank you very much for that presentation. That was helpful to get the overall sense of it. Do my colleagues have questions, observations? Doug?
Just a question about the point that you made concerning the different language groups and so forth, cultural groups that responded. Do you have a sense of how many in the different categories? That is, how many Spanish-speaking responses you got back, or Amharic, or French?
There were 18 surveys that were returned in Spanish. That was the only language for which other, that surveys were returned. At the same time, we asked the respondents if they spoke another language at home, and although they responded to the survey in English, about 30% or more of them indicated that they spoke a different language at home and still responded in English.
Hmm. And did you get a sense, or did you analyze the 18 Spanish responses, and did you get a sense that whether they were more or less the same kinds of categories of responses, or in the way they responded, was it similar to non-Spanish?
We did not single them out for a separate analysis, mostly because it's too small a number. They weren't identified initially as a group that we were to have a special analysis of. The demographic analysis included specific statistical comparisons of white, African-American, and other races.
Now, I represent Ward Six, which is the same ward in which the New Hampshire Avenue, University Avenue Crossroads exists. It got the terrible score on people's level of fear when they go out in the evening. It's ironic and somewhat tragic, because this is an area that is the largest commercial tax base in the city, with more than 200 businesses located there. It's also a place that is the focus of a lot of our revitalization effort, and yet the very businesses we're trying to attract and support there have this terrible dilemma of people who are afraid to go there after hours. But it's a frightening statistic, but yet it's valuable to us, because we'll have an opportunity, I hope, as we move forward in the year to address that. But the main question that I wanted to pose to you was, in your analysis, did you find major differences between the wards? That is, on these areas of, say, quality of life issues or a feeling that the city is representing them fairly? Did you find a difference between the six wards?
Where there were differences, and there were not for every single question, it did seem that Wards One, Two, and Three, in the aggregate, had different perspectives, the residents of those wards had different perspectives than those in Five, Four, Five, and Six. And broadly, I would say, if you looked at quality of life ratings and service delivery ratings, they were higher in One, Two, and Three than they were in Four, Five, and Six. And that held fairly consistently throughout where there were differences.
Well, I would, I'd hope then, and again, those aren't terribly surprising, but to have them reflected in the responses of the citizens is, I think, illuminating and also helpful, because I would hope that my colleagues and the city manager will give very strong focus and emphasis to those differences as a way of determining how we might be able to address the perceptions of, if not the realities, of what's going on in those places. But overall, I think you did an excellent job, and I'd say quite useful.
Colleen?
I only have one question.
I only have one question. I saw that you chose to do the percentages by pulling the percentage of people who expressed an opinion in the response. So there might have been a lot of people who turned in surveys but didn't express an opinion. You know, that's a, that's a choice, I guess, that the survey group made, because I don't think we made that choice. And can you tell me a little bit about why you do that, and if you have any information about the overall effect? Because I would think in some things that you're trying to capture, the representation might be fairly equal to the people who don't respond. But in other cases, like, say, the question is about how child-friendly a place is, and you might end up with the impression that seventy-four percent of your residents feel like it's very child-friendly, but in fact, it's only seventy-four percent of the people who have children, which may only be twenty percent of your population.
It's a very good point, Councilmember Clay, and we are very clear, and tend to be very clear, that these results, when we talk about evaluations of services, are folks' evaluations from the perspective of those who have an opinion. And those who have an opinion are the ones who we believe know enough to choose excellent, good, fair, or poor. We also have, as part of this report, all of the frequency distribution that includes the "don't know," so you can see exactly what percentage of the folks said "don't know," and how those who did know spread across the rest of the scale, so that there is no intention of there being anything misleading about this, that all of the data are there. The body of the report is, in a sense, limited to those people who know enough to offer an opinion. Because you have almost over a thousand respondents, even when we have as many as sixty percent who said they don't know, which has, which happened in one of the services, that means there are four hundred people selected at random in Tacoma Park who do know enough about that service to offer an opinion, and it's their opinion that is shown in the results. I do think, and perhaps you're alluding to this, there's something to be learned from knowing what percentage of folks don't have an opinion about a service. Those folks may benefit from some education from the city about the kinds of services that are offered and that are provided, so that they would have an opinion. You can imagine a lot of people have opinions of the police department, say, but may not actually have had that direct experience. Sixty percent hadn't had any contact with the police department, but there wasn't a sixty percent "don't know." And that's because opinions are formed beyond just direct experience. People read about service delivery in the paper, they talk to their friends, they see a police car in the case of police drive by, they look at an officer, they get a perspective about how they think the department's working just from those kinds of quick interactions, in addition to more in-depth and thorough interactions.
Okay, so then I have a follow-up question. Are the rates for people who don't express an opinion on any given question that we ask, are they similar to the rates for other municipalities that you track on those questions, or do you, do you look at that?
I want to look at that, because I think that's a really untapped resource for us. We don't have that norm. I would love to be able to give it to you. I think it would be very meaningful for us to be able to do that.
Thank you. Thank you for all the work.
In your studies in other cities, do you ever compare the kinds of results you get with advisory referenda or other means of gathering people's opinions in a more direct and perhaps simple manner?
I'm not sure I understand the question. Do you mean if we look at these advisory referenda to see, follow up, to see if they actually pass later on? Is that the question?
I don't really know how to frame the question beyond how I said, but do you do surveys before referenda and then compare with the results of the referenda?
Oh, sometimes, yes.
Or vice versa?
Yes, sometimes. If we're asked to do a survey that's intended to predict the outcome of a ballot issue, then we follow that and see how close we are. Generally, we're very close. Most often, however, we're not invited to predict an election outcome. It's much more policy-oriented. For example, even the question we ask here about the gymnasium, the vote isn't intended to happen in a month, as soon as a month, say. And even between now and a month, as we've all seen in the most recent political polls, lots of things can change. So we generally don't get into the business of intending to or promising to predict the outcome, and there'd be lots of caveats I'd offer about how what we see in this survey might translate into a ballot issue. But I would say, with eighty-three percent of the folks in principle feeling positively about this idea of a gymnasium, and still a majority feeling that they'd be willing to spend something, that's a very good start in terms of support for some kind of financial support for this project.
Does your company or provide assistance in forming the language for referenda?
Not usually. I mean, we have helped by testing through surveys what residents say about their support for a referendum, worded in a certain way, and perhaps if that's what you mean, in that respect, we do, but our business isn't to try to formulate the wording of ballot issues, but to test messages sometimes.
Thanks.
Sure.
Josh, and then Terry.
Do you offer comparisons with a smaller subset of your pool of cities that you've asked, done surveys with? Just because I imagine in that pool, there might be really big cities like Boston, Philadelphia, and could we get, is it possible to get information about how we would compare to similar-sized cities or cities that are in close proximity, cities we might think of as competitors?
Sure. And I say sure, in principle. If you have in mind a particular city, we may or may not have it in the database. If they've done a survey, we intend to have it in the database, and so if they've done one and it's not in the database, we could bring it in and integrate it to the database. But broadly, there's an opportunity that we offer to all of our clients, either compare to the entire database or, and/or a subset of the kind that you've described, and that could be defined uniquely for the jurisdiction. So we could put boundaries around populations of eight to twenty-five thousand, say, for a comparison to Tacoma Park, or it could be the eastern part of the U.S., or it could be certain kinds of jurisdictions next to metropolitan areas. So there are ways to cut the data. The finer you cut the data, the fewer the comparisons, so there's that trade-off.
My second question is, do you, what's your advice about how frequently a city would do something like this in terms of, you know, trying to work on the issues that are raised and then the feedback loop of getting the next survey?
Most of the folks we work with have survey cycles that are about one year or two years, generally not longer than that, although there's some that go even longer. My advice typically would be, and I think it's relevant here, not to do the survey any more frequently than you have a system in place in the organization to be able to take the data in and do something with the results. You'll have the opportunity to look, if you did it every year, and you've done some things in the interim, so that you would expect to see some change, that would be the reason to do the survey again. If it's going to take you longer to bring the results in and make the modifications, and you wouldn't expect to see change, then you probably don't need those survey results more frequently. In the private sector, they're doing this quite frequently. It's a different model in a certain way, and yet it's a model that a lot of local governments now try to emulate. But I wouldn't recommend doing this so often that it poses a problem for the interior workings of the organization.
Thank you.
If I can just ask a brief follow-up to that one. Is there anything that you can say about the way in which cities resurvey and how, whether they kind of go back to the same survey company and say, like, you know, do it again but take out ten questions, or whatever it is, and how that can affect price?
National Research Center has created something called the National Citizen Survey, which is kind of a semi-customizable survey that's done on a regular basis, somewhat canned, if you will. You know, there's certain questions that have to be asked, and other questions that can be selected, and room for some policy questions, with the intention that anybody who, and this is also true for our custom clients, of which Tacoma Park is one, any of the clients can, on a regular basis, use a core set of questions and compare your results over time to that core set of questions, and then have some space on the survey for topical issues that are relevant for a particular period of time. The gymnasium, once it's built, doesn't belong on the survey anymore, but there'll be other things that you're interested in and guidance that you'll want from your residents. So whether it's a custom client or one of the clients of the National Citizen Survey, having a core set of questions that you can track over a period of time helps you build a fairly stable baseline, so that when there are changes from that baseline, you'll have a better sense of why that happened. Because from one year to the next, if something goes down, you don't know if it's part of a long-term trend that's going down, or part of the natural changes in a data set that goes up and down. So developing a long baseline that's stable is very helpful for your policy evaluation and program evaluation.
Do jurisdictions tend to come back to you for the resurvey, or do there tend to be, does there tend to be movement around?
We have lots and lots of repeat clients, and almost, I can't, I can think of a couple clients who have gone elsewhere, and I think a lot of the reason, as I think about it, is they weren't happy with how they came out compared to other places. I think in a certain way, this is a dangerous business because we don't guarantee the results. We guarantee that there will be results, we just don't guarantee what they'll be. And so it takes a council and staff members, a certain wherewithal, to ask questions whose answer you don't already know, and so there's a risk for everybody in doing that. Generally speaking, I think our clients really appreciate the candor and the quality of their research methods, but we're prepared to bid on any kind of project that's a repeat project or a unique project, and we do. Typically, though, we have a long run and continue to have long runs and relationships with our clients.
Thank you, Mary Williams. First of all, I noticed that one of the answers is that the highest, Ward Four, had the highest percentage of respondents who say they watched the council meetings. So I'd like to take a moment and thank all those who are watching for tuning in and following the city business. I think it's important for all residents to do that, and I'm glad to see that my constituents are interested in what we're doing. I just had one question, and it really relates to something you mentioned earlier, where our kind of rating for one of the questions was low, but that it seemed to be in line with the norm across the other survey cities. And it strikes me that that kind of reminded me of when I had kids living at home, and one gets ready to go out the door, and I say, "Well, you're not going out looking like that." And they said, "Well, everybody dresses like this." Am I missing something here? Just the fact that all the other cities are rated low on the same, on the same point doesn't mean that we shouldn't be striving to be higher.
I think that's a, it's a good point. I think there's a lot to be learned just by looking at what the rating is. I think what you're referring to, Councilmember Siemens, is the rating for street repair. It was among the lowest, but it was at the average of what other jurisdictions give. Well, that low rating was about a forty-three on this hundred-point scale, which is below the scale midpoint, a little bit above fair. That, if you had no norm at all, and you took a look at the frequency distribution, you saw the percentage of folks who said "poor" or "fair," you'd probably say, "That's more than we'd like to have here." And that's a good thing to know, and you can act on that. I think it's also important to understand that street repair across the country gets a lot of fair and poor ratings from everybody. That doesn't mean it's okay, or you can just let it go. One of the things we struggle with is to understand that in greater depth. I sometimes suspect that, because we see such low ratings for street repair, we see low ratings for code enforcement, animal control, planning, street repair, these things are at the bottom across the country. And I'm not sure if that's because, and I used to work in a planning department, but everybody there was brilliant, and we did fantastic work. And nevertheless, we didn't get such great ratings. And so I don't know if there's certain kinds of services that, no matter how hard you try, you just can't do as well. Or if there's certain kinds of services that are really hard and demand so much money to be put in to raise their level that no jurisdiction can afford, to pave their streets with stainless steel, say. If you did, you'd probably get really, really high ratings, but that would cost a lot of money. So people, for certain kinds of services, are stuck with some general ways of thinking about service delivery that, and general opinions about service delivery that make some things just not as admired as other things.
Thank you. I'm sure that my children wish that you had represented them.
I just had a couple, I think mostly, observations. It surprised me that ten percent of the households said that they had a crime victim in the household who'd experienced crime in the last three months. And I don't remember whether that was normative or not.
We didn't have a normative comparison. Often, we ask that question over the last twelve months, and generally, that percentage is higher in other places, but it's confounded with the fact that it's a longer period of time. So I don't have a good normative comparison for it.
I don't know whether, when we resurvey, whether it's almost worth kind of tracking the three months and adding the twelve months just to have something normative. Because it just surprised me that there were that many households. Of course, I guess some of them could be victims of crimes elsewhere. It didn't necessarily say that he was a victim of crime in the city.
That's true.
They're thinking about political crimes.
Yeah, who knows? I've been loved by my country. Two things that surprised me, the use of, by our residents, of some of the city resources. The number of people who use the library was much higher than I thought, and the number of people who use, who read the newsletter was quite high. And I had falsely thought that the types of technology that people might use to get information from the city or information from council meetings would tend to be higher tech, would tend to be TV, cable, you know, computers, the internet. Those numbers tended to be lower, and a huge majority of people read the newsletter. And I think there tends, there tends to be a little bit of an attitude on our part that we always want to make sure that the information gets out as quickly as possible and use those newer technologies to do that, and there's a lifetime of up to a month on the newsletter, and we tend to kind of forget that that is used by a lot of people to keep up on things. And I think it would be worth our while to kind of maybe reevaluate how we think about the newsletter a little bit. You got a comment, Colin?
Yeah, that was actually one of the things that I saw while I was thinking about that issue of when people respond or not. And so if you added up, I think all of the goods or very goods, or look at it a lot or every once in a while, even when you got an eighty-five percent, but that was of the people who actually responded, and I think that might be one of those cases where the people who don't respond don't necessarily know what we're talking about. And then we got another one that said, like, three percent of them read the newsletter daily, and, okay...
That's impossible.
Yeah, the newsletter's really exciting and everything, but I don't know if you could really read it daily.
Maybe they read it over and over daily.
You certainly could read it over and over again, but I don't know what that says about you.
I think it also might say something about that particular thing. We've been doing newsletters for a long time, and I think we have a very good newsletter. newsletters for a long time, and I think we have a very good newsletter in terms of just its stories, its editing, how it looks. And I think we're sort of neophytes in understanding how to use the website to communicate. So some of that also might be a result of the relative quality of the two mediums or our expertise.
But it did lead me to think about rethinking the decision that was made some time ago. I don't remember how long ago. We used to have twelve issues of the newsletter, and then we dropped one and only have eleven. And it's, we've become a cropper of it sometimes, missing that issue and therefore not being able to use it to put something out there in a timely fashion. And kind of, we might want to rethink how we use the newsletter.
Well, very few people said they're getting too much information about a wide variety of the topics that we ask.
There was another one that I, that I wasn't going to bring up, Colin, but I wonder if it fits with those types of things you were talking about. And I'm looking for where it was, but it was a, I think it was the, where'd it go? Oh, Ward Two had a lower support for the gym, but a higher use of the recreation guide.
Yeah, I was fascinated that, by, I was fascinated by that as well. I think that, also, I think Ward Two had less support, more money that there was. But before I give everybody the impression that Ward Two were a bunch of cheapskates, is that the differences aren't really huge either. I mean, it's a few, it's a few percentage points across most of them. So while there is a difference, I'm not sure that it is a hugely statistically significant difference. But it was interesting.
But I had one, one more question and one observation. I noted that sixty-one percent of the respondents were female. Is that anything unusual?
Sixty-one percent?
I was on page thirty-nine, was my note.
The data, when they were, I'm sorry, you said thirty-nine?
Thirty-nine.
When we reweight the data to try to mimic as closely as possible the demographic profile, not every part of the demography gets aligned properly. So that's not to say I know for sure that that's incorrect.
Right.
Certainly, if, there's a large number of older adults living here, especially older, older adults, women outnumber men by quite a bit. But it's possible that this was a slight overrepresentation of them.
Okay. And then, I guess, my final observation was that on page forty, when we were looking at household size, that sixty-three percent were in either a one- or two-person household. And I guess that doesn't necessarily preclude children. But it does seem like a fairly high percentage of small households. But is that standard, or is that unusual?
That's not terribly untypical. Households in America are, in terms of numbers of population, are relatively small, getting a little bit smaller. So there's usually about thirty to thirty-five percent of the folks live alone in most communities, and then another percent, roughly the same, where there are two folks living in a house.
Okay, thank you. Any other, how far?
Yeah, I'd just like to take this opportunity to publicly thank Tom and his staff. They were really great for us to work with, very responsive, and it's been a pleasure. The other thing I just wanted to mention to the council is the staff has been meeting, and we certainly have been thoroughly reading these results. And I've asked the mayor in the near future for an opportunity for where staff could come back and basically share with you our thoughts about how we should address some of the concerns that came through the survey.
Good. Thank you very much.
Thank you all. Thank you for coming.
I do have one final closing comment, which I decided to save till the end. As you'll see why. I filled out the survey in our household. So when it says, for example, "How often do you attend a city council meeting?" And it shows up, you know, one to six times a week, and there's a one percent in there, I think I'm...
No, it's me, too. I had to fill out the survey in the house.
Started, I didn't think it would be anyone else.
As a matter of fact, I did also fill in the survey. Interesting random sample.
Well, that actually is even more interesting.
Well, we sent out to three thousand households, and there are probably only seven to eight thousand households in, sixty-eight hundred, there you have it. The probabilities are pretty good that we'd have three.
It's just about right.
Yeah, that's just about right.
Three out of six point eight, three out of seven. Again, thank you.
Thank you all very much. Appreciate what you mean.
It provided a lot of interesting information, and I'm glad we did this survey. And it took us a long time to finally get the, get to the point of doing this, of doing the survey and coming up with the questions that we wanted to use. But I think this will provide us with some great information.
Thank you. Thank you all very much.
I think it would be appropriate, given where we are in the agenda, and folks have just come in the room, that we go to the next agenda item, which is the resolution of condolences to the family and friends of delegate Jane Lawton. And Lonnie is here to provide some remarks and introduction.
Many of you, mayor, may not know that Jane was, among many other things, the cable administrator for Montgomery County. You've probably heard that she was the delegate from the Chevy Chase district in the Maryland General Assembly. She also served as a mayor in Chevy Chase for many years, and she was a lifelong dedicated public servant. She was a person who was passionate about her work and her family, and she was a wonderful advocate for the city in her role as cable administrator. The county administers, the cable television franchises, we have many now for the city, so we have an official, formal relationship. And I have worked with Jane over the last ten years on that, and she was tireless advocate for municipalities when, sometimes county municipalities' interests are not always the same. You might notice on occasion, maybe. And she was always a good advocate for local government because of her history. Jane was also a personal friend, and she and I worked together at ATOA, which is the National Association of Telecommunication Officers and Advisors, which is our professional association of people who are public interest media geeks and consumer rights craze fools. You know, we think it's an important thing to protect the rights of the citizens. And Jane was a tireless advocate. Jane was also an incredibly passionate mother to these two beautiful young women who, who have come of age in the time I knew Jane. So the mayor had suggested to me when we lost Jane that we honor her in public terrain, and so we have the resolution before you to consider. Did you want to read it, or shall I?
Why don't you?
Isn't that your job?
Well, but I'll, I'll delegate it to you.
Okay. All right. This is a resolution offering condolences to the family and friends of the honorable Jane E. Lawton. Whereas Jane E. Lawton was born in Ada, Oklahoma, on May twenty-fourth, nineteen forty-four, and passed away suddenly on November twenty-ninth, two thousand and seven. And whereas delegate Jane Lawton was a lifelong public servant, and at the time of her death was now a delegate for District Eighteen, as well as the cable administrator for Montgomery County. And whereas cable administrator Jane Lawton was an effective advocate for the city of Tacoma Park in its official relationship pertaining to cable television and telecommunications. And whereas Jane Lawton was a powerful national advocate for consumer rights through her work as a member and president of the National Association of Telecommunication Officers and Advisors, among other organizations. And whereas delegate Lawton was a good friend of Tacoma Park, supporting many legislative proposals of importance to the city, including bills concerning condominium conversion. And whereas Jane Lawton was also a consummate, consummate community leader, a proud mother of two daughters, and a joyous friend to many, whose presence will be missed in her hometown of Ada, Oklahoma, her neighborhood of Chevy Chase, Maryland, her political home of Annapolis, Maryland, and her professional home in Montgomery County. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the council of the city of Tacoma Park, Maryland, that on behalf of the city council, staff, and residents, we do hereby offer our deepest sympathy to the family and friends of Jane E. Lawton.
I would like to move the resolution. Second.
And I would just like to say that what I will always remember about Jane was the last time I saw her in the special session in Annapolis. And I was there to observe the session, and everybody said, "Oh, you know, go in and they'll, they'll recognize you if they see you up in the gallery." And I had a hard time getting to the place where they would recognize me because there weren't that many people there that day. It was a very short session, and I had to kind of get by the state troopers to get into the gallery up behind the speaker rather than in the back where the delegates don't see you. But I did manage to get up there, and there were a few minutes, it was timely, and there were a few minutes before they, they got to the point where they would recognize anybody. And one of our delegates, Heather Mazzier, stood up and said, we have the, at the time, I guess it was the, the mayor in waiting. We had had our election, but I wasn't officially sworn in yet. And the delegates, you know, stood up and waved, and that was that, and sat down again. And after I sat down, but before anybody else had a chance to do anything, Jane pushed back and stood up and said, "Hi, Bruce." And just, just nice things like that that just make you feel special and recognized and know that you have a friend there who is in, in a place to do wonderful things and yet knows how important it is, the interactions with people, and it just makes her really special.
Thank you, mayor. I had the pleasure of meeting Jane a couple of years ago when I took a class that she was also taking. It was a long weekend of instruction, and I was just struck by her friendliness and her helpfulness in, and the many hours that we spent together over that one weekend. She was a state delegate, and I was a city council member, but she was very helpful in coming to me and making suggestions on how I could do better, and what I could do, and how I could get ahead. In fact, she was encouraging me at that time to, you know, I should run for a higher office, run for a state delegate. And it was just, she was an incredible woman, and I, I was just shocked and so saddened to hear her passing unexpectedly like that. My heart goes out to you all.
Any, any public comments?
Do you guys want to say anything? You can come up here, or there's a party right there, whatever.
It's fine.
Is that the, oh, yes, it is. Well, on behalf of my family, I just wanted to say thank you to you all. This is a very nice tribute. And you know that Mom started out, not even sitting in Mayor Williams's chair, but sitting in a council member chair. And really, she thought local government like this, city councils, town councils, where people really knew what the concerns of the residents were, were incredibly important and also a whole lot of fun. As we were driving up here today, it was sort of like old home week, you know, we passed by the place where Mom used to take me for gymnastics, we passed by several different areas where we all went door-to-door for her when she was campaigning just a little while ago. And, and then we came into Tacoma Park where I spent a lot of time with her, particularly when I was in high school, particularly shopping. So this is very special, and we will always remember this. We really thank you.
Thank you. If we can vote to approve the resolution, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And if you'd all like to come up here also. Number three, first reading of the ordinance, make the technical amendments to the code rights of non-US citizens in Tacoma Park. And Sue is going to tell us why we're doing this.
I'm sorry to be up here so soon after we passed our sanctuary ordinance. We, we all thought that we had written a strong protective ordinance. I remember feeling it, all of you had been so eloquent and so committed. Unfortunately, we have since that time realized that there are some practical problems with the ordinance, nothing that undercuts its intention, but technical things that are required of the city based on other laws that we must continue to do so that the sheer breadth of our saying we're never going to ask for somebody's citizenship status has to be adjusted some to allow us to comply with certain laws. So I'll give you a few examples of those, and that's why we're in front of you tonight, to make the technical change to the ordinance that would allow us to comply where we really don't have any discretion. Here are the examples. You've all heard of I-9, that's the federal immigration law requirement that when you hire an employee, you get them to say what their immigration status is, and it's a requirement under, it has tax ramifications, and there isn't any discretion on the city's part. The city's choices are preempted in that instance. So when, when the city hires employees, we do have to get the I-9 to be filled out, which does require us to ask the question of immigration status. That's one example. The city provides passport services, as you know, we have a contract with the State Department to act as an agent to obtain information from citizens who voluntarily come in here and request that assistance. And it's required in that process that we ask people what their immigration status is, because obviously, that's an absolutely necessary factor in determining whether they're eligible for a passport or what kind of passport. Fortunately, again, that's entirely a voluntary program. Someone wouldn't come in and ask for that kind of assistance unless they were ready to share their immigration status. So those are two examples. A third one has to do with our police department. Under state law, only citizens, US citizens, can serve as law enforcement officers. It's not discretionary on the part of the city whether we can hire non-citizens. And therefore, it's necessary for the city to ask that question at the time of selecting people for employment with the police department. It's not necessary in any other capacity for the rest of the city employment, but for the police department, due to the state law, it is necessary.
And is that just, is that for sworn officer only, or for all employees?
Just sworn officers, yes, just sworn officers. So the suggested language that's in front of you is an attempt, if you look at the part that's underlined, is an attempt to meet this concern in a, in a way that does not dilute the more broad protections that the law originally has asserted. And I actually have one suggestion myself for a change in what's in front of you, because I hadn't been in town, some of you know I was out of the country myself, and what I would recommend.
Legally?
And so my suggestion is under, if you look at section 9.04.02B, which is the exceptions, the section does not prohibit, I would take out number two, which is the employment section, because I think it's adequately covered by section four, which would now become three, which, which is that inquiries regarding citizenship or immigration status required by state, federal, or international treaty. So the, there's no need to specify the employment area as a separate category, since the only reason we're, we're having to deal with it in the employment context, excuse me, is because of these federal requirements and state requirements that was earlier, earlier mentioned. And I just want to say that we've been trying to work closely with CASA on this issue. We worked very closely with them, as you know, on the earlier writing of the sanctuary law. And I think we'll probably have to talk a little bit more between first and second reading on precisely what the wording should be, because, for example, most of their officials had to be out of town and are very involved in some other crises as of tonight, and so they're not able to join us. But we did talk with each other, and I think we're, we're close on this, this as the best way to do it, but I could imagine some adjustments before second reading.
Questions? Josh, then Ruben, then Terry.
I first have a declaration, or a comment to make in a sense that I, my wife works for CASA, but I'm going to read a letter from Gustavo Torres. I regret that CASA of Maryland, De Maryland was not, would not be present in tonight's discussion, but I wanted to share with the council our position on the proposed change to the sanctuary law. As you know, we believe it is critical for Tacoma Park to have a clear and strong sanctuary law, and we are very proud to work with the council, we're very proud to have worked with the council last year to create our current law. We also recognize and respect that the need for city employees to be able to perform necessary job functions. We do not seek to limit this ability. We do, however, oppose any changes in the current sanctuary law, which are not clearly required to allow city employees to perform their job. Sincerely, Gustavo Torres. My first question is, in the section you were just referring, referring to, so 9.04.020B, in, in section one, it says, "The collection of information regarding citizenship status in connection with their registration or attempted registration of United, of non-United States citizens to vote in city elections." So I'm not, I'm not quite sure when we would collect that information, because I could go, any person can go if they only wanted to vote in the city election, correct, and register to vote for that election. So I don't think we would ever be asking people their, we'll be asking them their residency status, or whether they're a resident of Tacoma Park. But I'm not sure we would ever actually ask if they're citizens or non-citizens, or what their immigration status is. So I'm not sure that that clause even needs to be in there, because, or at least not as in the form of the collection of information. Yes, it's true that de facto, probably most of the people who only register in Tacoma Park are non-citizens, and someone could go and look at the voter rolls to, you know, make that determination or find those people, but we don't need to ask them questions about their citizenship in that situation.
This is a perfect example of where I think we need to do some work between first reading and second reading.
Okay.
I'm not sure about that. I think it might be because of the way state law required Tacoma Park citizens to register through the county, and that that's the entity that creates the voter roll. I'm not sure that, that citizens have that option to, to not use the county system, to only use the city system. I'm just not sure. It might, it might be the case, and I'm happy to sort of look at that more carefully, that city clerk and I were talking about that at the break, and we'll, we'll definitely come back and report on that. My concern is that it may well be that everybody else has to register through the county, and that the only people who have to do this kind of separate and special registration are non-citizens. And so by its very nature, that's part of the, the reporting that goes on.
And then just a clarification, sort of trying to understand the passport function that we actually provide. So we're in essence acting as an agent of the State Department?
Yes.
We would confirm, we look at and confirm the validity of IDs and that sort of stuff?
Exactly, and we actually have people swear to the truthfulness of, of the information they're giving us. We certainly don't do anything to determine whether they should get the passport, we just send a package of information on to the State Department. But we are in that kind of role of trying to verify information.
And then, as it relates to employment, yes, we have to do the I-9 process, but that would typically be done sort of at the end of an employment process. We're not going to be, start asking that in front of people as a city. I mean, that would probably get us into trouble anyway.
Right.
Okay.
Councilmember, my, my thoughts on that were to either have to say only those questions that are required by, you know, state or federal law. And that made me think, gee, we might as well just get rid of it and put it under number four anyway. But, but I agree that that should be a little narrower.
I guess I am a little bit, this is more a comment than a question, and maybe we can think about this before we come to second reading. I'm a little uncomfortable with sort of very broad number four, inquiries regarding citizenship and immigration status required by state or federal law or international treaty, in the sense that I think we can outline the specific situations where this might arise and put it in the, in the ordinance. And you could say, well, then other things might come up, how are we going to make sure that we keep track of and keep adding those things to the ordinance? But at least myself as a council member, I'd want to know when we, we would need to change some policy or practice where we started to ask people about their citizenship or their immigration status beyond what we had already clarified in here. And, you know, I, I say that partially in context of Patriot Act issues and issues where I think the, it might be federal law, but I think the federal government is probably overstepping people's rights in many cases. And I think as a city, we might want to take a position on that, even if it would end up in a fight with the federal government to make a point.
And if I can just ask for a clarification on one thing that he was saying, and to say, that I was going to make the same point that you just made, your last point, that I'd like to see us be as specific as possible and not broad like in Number Four. The question I had was about the, where we ask about the status for employment for sworn police officers. I'm assuming that that process all takes place before we would do something like hire a candidate and send them to their training, so that we wouldn't be, we wouldn't have already invested in them before we asked a question like that that might kick them out.
Oh, definitely, yeah.
Mayor Williams, it is actually a question for police officers on the initial employment application, so it is asked upfront at the time of application to avoid exactly the situation you're describing.
Okay, good, thanks.
And I would be okay with that. I want to distinguish that from the general I-9 form you have to fill out, which asks for your status.
My memory about the I-9 is exactly what Councilmember Wright is talking about, which is that it was an important political compromise when it was originally acted into law, that it would only be asked after hiring, so it would be less likely to be a tool for discrimination against Hispanics.
Ruben.
Yeah. Could you clarify in Number Two? It says, "And prospective candidates for elective office."
Again, I didn't write that, but my understanding of what my office was getting at was, because council members receive pay for your duties, you also have to fill out I-9s. And so the concept was it would affect eligibility. I don't agree with that. That's another reason why I would take that section out. But I hear you, that it's this trade-off between having a more casual concept where these things could all be versus being specific.
I guess someone could run for office in Tacoma Park and then choose not to take the salary.
Yes, I agree.
Anything else, Ruben?
I would like to move the ordinance, but-
You've just done it?
Okay.
Okay. I was looking around, because technically, anything said is a second. You don't have to say, "I second." You just speak, you're the second. Terry.
It's already been seconded. Thank you, Mayor. First of all, I would just like to comment on the, in general, on the process. I notice this has happened a couple times recently, and I'm not talking about our city attorney, but just in general, I think it would be helpful if we have a work session so we get some agreement on what the resolution is before we move it to first reading. I think it should be the exception that we have modifications between the first and second reading, rather than sit here during the first reading and trying to craft what we really want in the resolution before we, but yet vote on what we haven't really finalized yet. Just make that comment in general. I had made myself the same note as you were talking earlier, that I think there's a really, I'm really concerned that we should make things very specific in the resolution, rather than general. I appreciate your suggestion to cover things in a general way, but I'm concerned with this particular topic, that there seems to be a lot of interest in knowing specifically what we are approving when we do vote on these things. So I think the more specific the language in the resolution, the better we are, so that we don't give a carte blanche approval for something that hasn't even happened yet. The, I wanted to just make an observation on the state law that requires that police be citizens. I would like to point out that the members of our military do not have to be citizens to go and fight for this country. And that's something I hope that someday our state legislators can think about, and see if there isn't, maybe the community is better served by opening up our police positions to community members who are not necessarily citizens. The, I think the concern that I have is not just about collecting the information, but retaining of the information. And some of the information on whether an employee is or is not a citizen, whether that has to be retained after you ask the question.
That's one that does, but-
But maybe there are others that don't, and-
I think the passport one, we probably do not need to retain it.
Thank you. And that was, that was something I just wanted us to think about. And the other thing is, is some of these, as we look at some of the state and federal requirements, if there are other ways that we could address the issue other than just collecting the information and keeping it, and I think the one that Councilmember Wright mentioned with the voter registration is an example, that maybe what's needed is, rather than saying that we have, changing our law that says we have voter registration for non-citizens, that it be changed to voter registration for those who are not registered through the state system. That, in other words, to resolve the problem may be something that we can do within our own laws, rather than collecting the information. Thank you.
Colleen.
Well, so that raised an interesting question. I hadn't considered that people might want to register only through the city, even though they were citizens. I suppose you would avoid jury duty and-
There's a perception you would avoid jury duty, although I think that's not the way that they also-
It's not the only place from which they collect the information?
Right.
Anyway, something else to think about. The question that I have is, when the ordinance was moved, was it moved as-is, or with any of the changes that we've been discussing incorporated?
I took it, frankly, at this point as it was written in the packet, and we will consider changes at second reading.
That's how you move it?
I think it works actually.
Well, I believe that's how it works, but yes, I actually approve of the changes.
So then we should all vote against this one because we want the changes?
No, that wasn't what I was trying to say. No twisting words.
Glad we didn't make sense to me. Why would you vote for this if we know that we don't want it, and we want something different?
So we don't have to come back to it again?
It's a bizarre process.
Let me just-
I actually would like a clarification.
Sure, go ahead.
If we vote against it, does that mean we have to have a first reading?
Yes. And I was just going to say, addressing Terry's point about whether things come to work session or changing things between first reading and second reading, I would say that in general, the staff makes recommendations to me about whether we need a work session on something, based on whether we think we're going to need to go through things and come up with some clarifications and talk about it. I didn't get any indication that that was going to be the case here, and I don't really see the problem in making changes between first reading and second reading. We're always free to do that. And one of the, one of the potential downsides to kind of always bringing things to a work session first before first reading is, it just increases the amount of time we have to set aside on the agenda for whatever business we're picking up. And if you want to spend more time here, we can move in that direction, but the sense was, we wanted to be a little more efficient with our time. So I'm happy with moving something at first reading, knowing that we're going to make some changes at second reading, and not having a problem with that.
I generally agree with that. I think in this case, because I think the language needs to be very specific, and I would actually prefer, so I would probably vote against it, because I would prefer to have an additional cycle, basically, through the ordinance.
Would somebody like to move to table to a time certain?
I don't know. Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, have to say what the time certain is.
Time certain. How long do you think it would take to refine and cover?
I assume a couple weeks, maybe?
Okay, two weeks.
Okay. The meeting two weeks from tonight, which I think is on a Monday, not a Tuesday, correct?
Yes, correct.
Okay, so to January 28th for first reading?
This may need to, probably goes without saying, but in the interim staff, I am having staff comply with any applicable federal and state laws. Part of the reason why I had encouraged the city attorney's office to try to bring this forward, is obviously, staff does not want to be acting contrary to a council ordinance. At the same time, I'm not going to direct a staff member to act contrary to state or federal law either. So I just want to make that clear.
Let me just comment.
There's a confusion about that.
There was some interesting back and forth, I believe, in the Washington Post today, in letters to the editor, about, talking about undocumented versus documented, illegal versus illegal in the immigration arena, and the fact that in many cases, just about all of us at some time or another have done something illegal, and therefore, it's not necessarily the right way to talk about an immigration issue, to talk about it being illegal. So we don't necessarily want to, in talking about an immigration issue, have our employees doing something that might technically be illegal. So all those in favor of tabling to two weeks from tonight, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Aye.
Okay, we have six to table and one not is tabled for two weeks. And the next agenda item is first reading ordinance authorizing the FY08 budget amendment number two.
As Mayor indicated tonight, what is before you would be the second amendment to the FY08 budget. There are essentially five reasons for the budget amendment that's before you this evening. The first is since adoption of the budget. We have been awarded a grant from the Maryland Emergency Management Agency. This is a flood mitigation assistance grant. There is a required city match, but in discussing this matter with the Public Works Director, she indicated that she has confirmed that the match could be provided through in-kind staff support, which is already budgeted. It's essentially the city engineer's salary and benefit cost, and as briefly it is in the audience this evening, if there's any specific questions about that grant. As the council may recall from last week's work session, I did administratively authorize an extension of the contract with MTFA Architecture. The council had requested that the Ad Hoc Auditorium Committee continue their work from September onwards to bring back some recommendations to the council regarding the proposed renovation of the space that we sit in. The committee felt that they could benefit from some continued assistance from the architectural firm, and I did authorize that administratively. So part of the budget amendment would essentially move the money to the right place in the budget for that, and that contract extension had an associated cost of $7,500. Back in December, council had discussed the possible extension of a note for city-owned property in Tacoma Junction. I had recommended to the council at that time that they consider, rather than extending the note, actually paying it off. In consultation with the finance director, we felt that that made better financial sense for the city, and the council did authorize the payoff of that note. As I had indicated to the council back in early December, there would be a budget amendment required to essentially move the money to the debt service division of the budget to reflect that transaction. Two other items that are covered in the budget amendment, one concerns the legal expenses, the legal division budget. Not surprisingly, as the council may recall from seeing the summaries of our legal costs for this fiscal year, that's something that I provide to the council on a monthly basis. We have spent a considerable amount of money during this fiscal year, particularly on the Tacoma metro development issue. And as is indicated in the cover sheet, for services rendered by Silver and Pearlman through November 30th of 2007, we had already gone through 60% of the legal division's budget in essentially five months of the fiscal year. I do anticipate that there will be other legal work related to the Tacoma metro development, probably likely this fiscal year as that process moves forward, as well as just the customary legal charges we incur. So I have suggested to the council in this budget amendment that we appropriate additional money to the legal services division, to try to get us through the fiscal year. And last but not least, you may recall that the FY08 budget did not include a community center fund. It was my optimistic hope, I guess, that we would be through all the issues related to Phase One and Phase Two of the community center project as of June 30th. That unfortunately is not the case, and we have encouraged some bills, working with the project architect, reviewing pay applications, things of that nature, as well as the city's construction attorney. So what is before you this evening would essentially appropriate the fund balance for that fund, which is just over $46,000. It's not recognized as a revenue, but essentially, it is recognizing that there are expenses that will be charged to that fund, and that there is a revenue source in the fund balance to pay for those transactions. So if there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer them. I would note, under the fiscal impact section, I know this is an area that there's been some email traffic and some interest on the part of the council. A number of the items that I've mentioned would transfer monies from the unappropriated reserve of the general fund to the appropriate line item in the budget. The items that are in the draft ordinance before you total roughly $213,000. The largest single item would be the property loan payoff that we talked about in early December. Upon passage of this budget amendment, should the council so choose, the unappropriate reserve would have a balance of just under $76,000.
Thank you. Are there any questions? Someone want to move the ordinance?
No.
Second. Any discussion, further discussion? Josh?
I would just quickly say that I'm happy to see that we're moving extra money into the legal arena, so that we have the flexibility we'll need to, to deal with anything that might arise related to the metro situation, and have the flexibility of the council needs to, and the city needs to, to pursue legal means to make sure that our citizens have fair access and quality access to transit. So I'm very happy with that.
Any other comments? Okay, I remind my colleagues that a bunch of the amendment requires two-thirds for approval, so we need at least five votes, not four. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstained? Next item on the agenda is item number five, single reading ordinance authorizing contract for Phase Two of Cleveland Avenue Stormwater Project. And Public Works Director General Brinkway is here.
Thank you. You may recall, last fiscal year, we brought you an ordinance for a contract award for Phase One of the Cleveland Avenue Stormwater Project. And not to go into too much detail, as we'll be touching on that later in the month on the 22nd, this is a project that the city engineer's been working for a couple of years now, trying to develop the best solution to a stormwater problem in that area that would improve water quality, as well as enhance environmental conditions in that area. There were two options. One could have been to create a large, traditional stormwater pipe from the end of Cleveland Avenue, down through the backyards, and access a large storm drain line that goes along Pine Branch Road, would have been an extensive project, quite an expensive project, as well as, you know, potentially damaging as you're going through forested areas, wooded areas, through backyards. The alternative was to try to address and deal with the groundwater and the stormwater as it's developed, from rains and rooftops, and to try to increase the infiltration or the water penetration into the ground, to that actually sustain the trees in particular in that area. So- So as this project was developed, it was originally developed to occur in phases as the design and the planning went along. So we completed phase one last year. That included work on the tail end of the street, basically the creation of a large rain garden, primarily on private property, to address the water that flows, sheet flows off the street, and a trench drain to serve as kind of a backup collection of any water to keep the sheet flow from eroding the soils. What had been happening in that area with no drainage at the end of that street is private property was being damaged as a result of the standing water, running water, and the erosion from the sheet flow of the street. So that was accomplished last year. The project this year is to enhance the infiltration of the stormwater along the street itself. So the idea is to create what they call an infiltration basin or an infiltration system. We're actually under the street through the use of permeable pavers, as well as the actual excavation and relining of the area underneath the street with permeable surfaces that allow water to go through it. And in the process of going through that soil and sand and other filtration media, it cleans the water and allows it access into the subsoils below to feed the roots of the trees. So that's what phase two will entail, actually creating the infiltration basins underneath the street, re-putting the pavement down in a section of the street where that's taking place, and connecting the system to the trench drain at the bottom, so that it works in concert with each other, that it creates a system that is sustainable and that manages the stormwater. The interesting thing in particular to me about this project is this and one in which, I guess engineers by nature are conservative, and so the design standards that were used on this project is to manage the stormwater flow for a hundred-year storm. And that's not a standard that's generally applied or required of projects in terms of stormwater management. Generally, you're asked to meet one year or two year, or if it's fairly strenuous, a ten-year stormwater flow. So the plan here was to design a system that would more than handle the normal storm flow and stormwater creation in that area, so as to make sure that we didn't have a design error that would perpetuate or continue the problem that had been there in the past. So this is a system that's designed to not only be environmentally beneficial, but also to maximize the protection from stormwater damage to a large degree. Of course, no system is 100%. You know, tomorrow we may have a hundred-year storm, you just never know when it's coming. It doesn't come every hundred years anymore. But it is a measurement criteria that's used in the industry to try to mark and dictate standards for those types of things. We are very pleased that we are developing a repertoire of companies that are, that we're able to call upon to give quotes and estimates. Two years ago, I don't think we would have had three bids on a project like this. So we've been pleased to identify those companies, and I think, you know, the industry is changing, and more and more companies are realizing that they need to develop a broader range of construction techniques. So we're very pleased with the award, the company that we recommend has had extensive experience in Virginia, and also some of the company folks have lived and worked in Silver Springs, so they know the area quite well, and are excited to participate with us in this project.
Good, thank you. Somebody like to move the ordinance?
No.
Second. Just let me ask the clerk, is it helpful if I identify the mover and the secondor, or are you fine doing that? Okay, moved by councilmember Wright, seconded by councilmember Seaman. Comments? Terry.
Thank you. Daryl, I wonder, looking at the topology of that area, what's the area that's going to be benefiting from this change? How big is the area?
Primarily the properties along Cleveland Avenue themselves. They've been bearing the brunt of the standing stormwater erosion from that. It's worse at the end of the street because the street is sloped down to a dead end. So as you go, you know, from the top of the street to the end of the street, the impacts will be lessened or improved towards the bottom of the street.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Any public comment on this ordinance? Okay, all those in favor of the ordinance, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Oh, single, sorry, sorry. Clerk, please call a roll.
Daryl Williams?
Aye.
Councilmember Jerry?
Aye.
Councilmember Clay?
Aye.
Councilmember Robinson?
Aye.
Councilmember Snider?
Aye.
Councilmember Smith?
Aye.
May I just also add, in case anyone's watching at home and wondering about the timeframe of that, we're not going to start construction now in the winter. It would be taking place probably most likely in March.
Okay, thanks. All right, and now we have item number six, single reading ordinance, which we will call a roll on, authorizing purchase of in-car video camera systems. And this is coming back with a request to rescind a previous ordinance and adopt a new one because of changed circumstances?
Yes. In October, we came before council to seek purchase of the in-car video cameras, using a variety of grant funds for that. Prior to coming before council, we had looked at this custom system, and that was the system that we were pretty comfortable with seeking permission to purchase. We believed it had been on the, it would be a prohibited purchase because it used a Sony camera, and it was believed that Sony was on the list of companies on the nuclear free organizations list. Subsequently, we learned that Sony is not supposed to be on that list. It's no longer on that list. So we wanted to reevaluate the custom electronics product compared to the Panasonic product we had originally obtained permission to purchase. There are a number of other areas that we also subsequently learned that we're going to incur some additional costs to use the Panasonic system. So it's not simply a matter of was it on the nuclear free list, or is it not supposed to be. There are some operational advantages to the custom product. The most compelling advantage to the custom product is that it has, there's a facility that custom operates in Prince George's County in Lanham that will provide the installation and will provide support for the equipment. That was absent in the Panasonic system. Also, there are a few features to it that make it somewhat more desirable. The Panasonic system had to be manually manipulated in order to take video of the backseat in the event that you had a prisoner in the backseat of the car. The custom product, as well as most of, most other products, have a rear-facing camera that automatically captures that, so you don't have the option for the user to make a mistake and not turn the camera in the right angle to catch that image. The cost is a little bit higher than in the Panasonic issue, but some of the costs that we found out later that we would have to incur with Panasonic may make that almost a wash on that. We had originally believed with the Panasonic that we'd be able to operate it through the mobile data computers. We learned subsequently with some of our partners in Montgomery County that they were having difficulty getting that system to operate through the MDC without having some interference with that equipment. So we were going to have to buy, we were going to be forced to buy a standalone viewer system that would have added costs to the original Panasonic costs. So overall, the system, the custom system is comparably priced. It looks like for the money available in the grants, that we'll only be able to get 11 units as opposed to 12, but it's pretty close in cost.
I would like to move the ordinance?
Second.
So moved by councilmember Seaman, seconded by councilmember Clay. Can I just ask the city manager what the procedure is that we use for determining what's on and not on the nuclear free, I think it's the Nuclear Free America list that we adopted by ordinance as the list, and we revise it every so many years when they come out with a new one? And what I'm hearing is it wasn't, it was, wasn't supposed to be on the list, but maybe it was, and what's the adaptive list, and what's the procedure we use to deal with that?
I'm going to defer to Ms. Carpenter because she's much more of an expert in the process than I am, and I know councilmember Sniper may be able to weigh in as well, as a former member of the committee.
I don't recall that. When did we do that? Was it in the last year?
It was in the beginning of '06, I believe, and it was a purchase that was desired from Sony. In looking at the letters, it appeared that there was some mystery around some of the contracts that Sony had with federal government as to whether or not it had to do with nuclear free, nuclear weapons or not, and the Nuclear Free America president determined that it did not have to do with nuclear weapons.
Okay. Questions? Dan?
In the sixth, whereas it says this is a cooperative purchase and competitive bidding is not required, can you educate me on what that means, cooperative purchase?
There's a contract in place between Prince George's County government and custom to provide this camera, and we're riding on the same price on that contract. So their contract had been competitively bid, so under the city procurement regulations, we don't have to competitively bid it, we can just ride on the same price.
We're cooperating with Prince George's County?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
And we generally have that same ability through, I'm not sure whether it's through individual agreements, or is it a COG agreement that jurisdictions can ride on each other's contracts?
It's actually both.
Okay, both. So we can do that among many jurisdictions, many organizations, like, you know, a particular police thing like the Metro Police or somebody else? There's probably hundreds of ways we can ride on a dispute contract. Other questions? Okay. I guess my only question is, this will put it in 11 cars, what are the prospects for getting more of them to put in other cars? The council over the years has been hopeful that we could have this tool so that there's less question about what happened.
Right. The good news is that Prince George's County has renewed their contract, it's a multi-year contract. I think they'll be doing business with custom for years to come, and that's why custom has put a facility right here in Lanham. So we hope to identify future monies to be able to purchase as many of these as we can, and we should be able to get them at this price for years to come.
Good. And how many, currently how many cars will we have that won't have them that we would want them in?
We currently have, I think, 34, 35, what I would call traditional police vehicles. Of those, some are in command staff and some are in CID, which probably will not lend themselves really to video camera uses. But I would say probably 30 are, or will be in the next couple of years patrol vehicles, so we'll need another 19 or so, 18 or 19.
Okay, I think you kind of answered my question, that is, you will prioritize putting these in patrol vehicles first?
Absolutely. We're going to start with putting them in particularly prisoner transport vehicles or the fleet vehicles that are shared by multiple officers, because there's a little less accountability into those vehicles, because multiple people are using them. But then probably kind of starting at the bottom and working our way up, so starting with the officers that are more likely to have encounters that would be valuable to capture on tape, officers doing DUI enforcement, for instance, lots of traffic enforcement, those types of officers will get the cameras first, because it's most valuable to them to have the evidence for their court cases.
Okay, good, thanks. Any further questions? It's a single reading ordinance, would clerk please call a roll?
Daryl Williams?
Aye.
Councilmember Barry?
Aye.
Councilmember Clay? Aye.
Councilmember Robinson?
Aye.
Councilmember Snider?
Aye.
Councilmember Wright?
Aye.
Okay, we're now moving into work session. Item seven, discussion prioritizing program open space and other available grant funds. Barb?
Yeah. The purpose of tonight's work session is to basically provide the council with an overview of the program open space and other grant monies that have been earmarked for community center-related projects, to answer any questions that the council may have, and to basically get some direction from the council as to how you might wish to proceed in terms of sorting through the various options, including any thoughts the council may have about a public input process. Just very briefly, since the cover memo is rather detailed, in both FY07 and FY08, the council did dedicate a portion of the city's program open space allocation to community center-related projects. Specifically for fiscal year 2007, the council had dedicated the vast majority of the funds, actually, to construction of a gymnasium addition to the community center. A portion of that funding has already been used to conduct the gym feasibility study by AMC All Architects, and there's currently a balance of approximately $382,000. I would note that program open space funds do have a required city match of 25%. In the resolution that the council passed in 2006 regarding that program open space allocation, the original intention had been to use Washington Adventist Hospital's contribution or pledge towards the gym as the city's required match. In 2007, the council approved a resolution allocating the 2008 program open space funds, and in that resolution, the council signaled its intent to dedicate approximately $206,000 for the renovation of the council chamber auditorium. The source of the city's local match was not identified in the resolution. It was presumed that it would be the city's general operating funds, but I would note that there is currently no amount included in the current year budget. At the time that the council passed resolution 2007-20, we were just getting ready to get started with the feasibility study. We really didn't have a very good idea of where we were headed with the project, and we typically try not to engage in too much speculation when we budget dollars in the city's annual budget. The city also has two other sources of funds that are dedicated for the community center project. One was a state bond bill that we received in fiscal year 2007 of $360,000. The way this funding works, and Suzanne Ledlow can correct me if I misspeak, but the funding is allocated very generally towards what is referred to as the Tacoma Park Community Learning Center. That's actually the description that we have used rather than the community center. In our presentation materials, which would include the bond bill application, as well as the presentations that were made to the state legislature, and I believe that councilmember Clay was one of the presenters at that time, if I recall correctly, we did represent that those funds would be used for construction of a gymnasium, though I don't believe that's legally binding necessarily. The city also has been awarded a federal grant of about $247,000 from the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development Economic Development Initiative program. This was the same program, I believe, that we had gotten some funding to construct the computer learning center several fiscal years prior to that, and the project was defined very generally as the construction and build-out of the community center. And if you add all those amounts together, they total approximately $1.2 million. For the portion of that amount that is program open space related, we would need to have a city match of about $147,000. As I indicated in the cover memo, there have been a variety of projects over the years that have been talked about. Obviously, the two that have been discussed most widely have been the construction of a gymnasium addition and the renovation of the council chamber auditorium. During my approximately three and a half years with the city, there has also been, at various times, some discussion about a library facade to try to tie the two buildings a little bit better together architecturally, and there has also been from time to time some sense that we should try to be improving the parking lot approach to this building, as well as the Grant Avenue entrance. I think the council is very well aware that we've kind of done different levels of study regarding these various options. We've had feasibility studies done for both the gymnasium addition, as well as the renovation of the council chamber auditorium. Some of the other items that have been talked about, truthfully, have just been ideas, and we really don't have good cost estimates. Regarding the library facade, this was something that came up shortly after I joined the city and the council at that time in the fall of 2004, asked staff to get what I would refer to as a budget estimate. So it's not a very engineered, very well-studied number, but we did approach James F. Knott Construction, the con- But we did approach James F. Knott Construction, the contractor for Phase One, about the possibility of adding a facade to the library. And they had provided at that time with a number of just under $771,000. Obviously, that's been quite a few years ago, and it was a budget estimate only. So if that is something that the council would want to pursue, I would certainly highly recommend that we get some better cost figures for the council to talk about. We have done literally no work in terms of coming up with any kind of cost figure for improving the rear entrance to the building or to the Grant Avenue entrance. That was not something that we've been any direction from the council on. The last item I did want to mention, however, is there has been some talk in the past about doing some improvement to the rear parking lot. Some of the council members who have been on for at least a couple of years may recall that there was a very valid concern about pedestrian safety, particularly children walking through the parking lot. We had talked at that time that really to put in any type of sidewalk would require a much more extensive resurfacing, restriping of the parking lot. And we have not yet done that. What we did in the interim was to try to create the walkway bordering the library. But I think certainly I see every day when I'm coming through the parking lot that there is a need to provide better pedestrian and cyclist access through this parking lot. The city engineer had done a cost estimate at the council's request probably about a year and a half ago, I'm sorry, a little over two years ago. And his projected cost at that time for resurfacing the lot and constructing a sidewalk was about $37,000. In talking to the Public Works Director late last week, obviously, we've seen increases in oil prices which are going to affect that cost figure. And she proposed that the more likely cost today would be in the neighborhood of $45,000. So just very briefly, those are some of the projects that have been talked about relative to the community center. I'm sure the council may have some ideas or the community may have some ideas. But what we were hoping to do tonight as a staff is to get some sense of, I guess, what direction the council would like to go in, if you have a preference for certain of the projects I've mentioned, the ones you want to throw on the table. Or, as I mentioned, some of these items really would need to be researched before we would be able to provide the council with any type of cost estimate whatsoever.
If I can just start off by saying, I think what might be helpful is to first address any questions about any further information that the city manager didn't provide in the memo or her summary of what we've got so far to see if there's some missing piece that somebody's looking for. And then we'll talk about specifics of what we got and where we go from here. Does anybody have any particular information that they're looking for?
City manager. When do these funds lapse, maybe?
I think that's the million-dollar question, Councilmember Barry. Historically, and Miss Ledlow and I had a discussion about the specific issue, typically the funds are expected to be used in roughly three to four years, is what we've seen. Some of you may recall with some of the community center funds, for instance, the EDI grant, the HUD grant, or some of the POS funds, we actually carried them forward several years. I think the question before everyone is with the uncertain climate at the state in terms of the funding shortfall, if that's going to be different than what we've seen in the past.
Yeah, and if I can just add that on a number of different fronts, and I remember mostly with the POS funds, that the state and the county both said to us that they were, they didn't want to go forward with constant reprogrammings and holding things off any numbers of years, that it needed to be, that both, I think both the county and the city needed to tighten up our processes and get projects in line and allocated and funded and finished in a more expedited manner than maybe we had been used to historically.
I mean, obviously, we're in somewhat of a different position, I know, than we were in when I first started because the oldest funds we have go back to fiscal year '07. But we are certainly, for some of the funds, a year or so into that process.
Right. But we had been at some point, probably three, four, five years, out on funds. And it was like, basically, the message was, you will not do this or they'll disappear. You know, just from a kind of a bookkeeping standpoint, nobody wanted to deal with that anymore. And then for the other part of the funds in terms of some of the bond funding from the state, the message from our state delegates to former Mayor Porter was that it was essentially use it or lose it in this fiscal climate. And I approached Delegate Hickson to kind of reconfirm that. And she did reconfirm that and said, who knows what will happen? And given funding at the state and funding at the county, and all of the counties are facing hundreds of millions of dollars of shortfall, everybody's looking to vacuum up whatever funds they can find and do something with them to address it. And the clear message from that direction was, if you have bond funding that is hanging out there, it may disappear.
I think in talking to Miss Ledlow about this issue, I think one of the things that certainly I think any of the grantor sort of look at is, do you even have a process? Are you trying to examine how the funds could be used? So I think they do tend to look somewhat more sympathetically if you're in the middle of a feasibility study, for instance, where you're in the process of obtaining cost estimates as opposed to you're just sitting there and don't have any clue as to where you want to go and you haven't taken any action whatsoever.
Terry.
Thank you, Mayor. I guess what I would just like to do is tell you my priorities. And I guess part of that is what's not my priorities.
Okay, can I just find out if anybody has any other kind of information, questions?
I did have a couple. One was just clarifying what the POS can be used for versus the grant funding or the bond funding. Because there's, you know, can the POS money be used to make the back entrance in Grant Avenue area look okay? Or can the POS funding be used to improve the HVAC system? Or do we have to do that with the bond funding? The HVAC system, sorry, in the third floor in the back of the building where we have portable air conditioners. So just clarifying that would be helpful because we get POS money, we will get POS money in the future, so we might decide not to do X now and potentially do it in the future. But if we can't use the POS money for that, we can't fund here.
I can answer that question, I think, as best as we know. The program open space is for recreational or natural park uses. And a community center with recreational kinds of activities meets that criteria. When we first got POS monies approved for the community center, we had to submit floor plans and the game room and the teen room counted and other rooms did not count. They didn't want the meeting rooms, for example, to count in that category. And so then there were real discussions, well, how does the lobby work if it's kind of functioning over multiple spaces? It's somewhat subjective to the state staff when it gets down to that point. Sometimes you can make a good argument that a particular part of the facade is part of an overall recreational aspect of the, you know, it's attached to that part of the building and it's part of the whole plan. But in any event, we would need to have the staff in and look at the facility and make a determination. They did come and make a, because we had first gotten a sense that the auditorium work might not count, we did have the staff person in from the state, and he confirmed that it would count. He looked at the kind of uses and how it was connected to the other recreational spaces and considered that that would. If we start talking about the facade that's right out here, I'm not sure. And that would be something that, it kind of depends on how it's presented as a package. If it were just done individually, I think it would be doubtful.
And so it sounds like HVAC on the third floor would not be eligible?
That does not sound like eligible.
I would add to what Suzanne said is when we, when I was going through and submitting for reimbursement to the various entities that we had gotten grants from the community center project, because of the complex situation Suzanne is describing, I did not submit any bills for the POS funds until we got to Phase Two of the community center. And then even then, very carefully looked at the type of work that was being performed by TRG Construction, the contractor, to make sure that the work they were doing was specifically related to the game room or the teen room or things that were clearly recreation. We even avoided some of the lobby work and things of that nature, just to be on the safe side.
My other question is, have we had any discussion with Adventist about whether they would be willing to still make a grant or a portion of the grant for something besides the gymnasium like the auditorium? So we have to figure out matching funds, is it possible?
I had a very, very cursory conversation with Jerry Stock some time ago. Obviously, he is the president of Washington Adventist Hospital. He reports to a board. So he was just, made it very clear, he was just speaking for himself. And I don't know whether or not he's ever conferred with his board. His initial reaction when I asked him that question was that anything that the hospital would probably donate, understandably, would have to be tied to the hospital's core mission. And clearly, something of a, the nature of a gymnasium was tied into an active lifestyle, healthy living component which fit with the hospital's mission. His sense at that time was he was not sure that he could make the same argument for the renovation of the council chambers and the auditorium. But once again, that was just sort of his initial off-the-cuff comment. And he and I have not had a discussion since then about the matter.
And I can follow up on that. I'm meeting with him tomorrow.
And then lastly, because I'm an EOP, related to the budget, are there places we can find that money to do the match if we wanted to spend the money?
I mean, I think if that's, I mean, I think there's two questions to answer to your question. One is, we also have to look at the timing of it. Program open space funds are done on a reimbursement basis. And obviously, the council were to go forward with whatever project. There's going to be, you know, some time involved in terms of developing disspecifications and getting this back before there was an actual contract award. So realistically, you may find yourself close to the FY '09 budget and you could actually include the funds, you know, for any kind of required match. As we talked about this evening, the balance of the unappropriated reserve, assuming the council passes Budget Amendment Two, would actually be less than the amount that would be required for the match. I think if that's the direction the council would like to go and you're looking at doing it in this fiscal year, I could certainly go back through and review the various departmental budgets to see where they're at. I will actually be meeting with the staff later this month and into early February, doing their mid-year budget reviews with them. So I'll be in a better position to answer that question, probably in the next 30 days.
One last question, just related to the money and our ability to reserve it for future use. If we say no, we really want to continue to save it for the gymnasium, is that we're clear about what we're going to use it for? We just can't tell you exactly when that is. It might be when we sell off the lot next to the co-op and we get a bunch of cash that we would use that. Is that something that they?
The program open space has a different kind of flexibility than the state bond bill funds. The state program open space is, it's allocated from the state to the counties. And here it's through Park and Planning. And so then there's a certain kind of pot of which they have a fraction that comes to us. We submit an annual program, how we intend to use it in the future. And we can be very clear that, you know, we see it as a multi-year project. And if it is, you know, a relatively short time and it's pretty clear and we're making progress, as the city manager has said, that it, that there's, you know, it's clear we're making progress on it or there's a real effort towards it, it gets quite a lot of strength. Where we did have a problem, what, 10 years ago, was every year we were changing it to something else and then not spending it. And that did not send a signal that we knew what we were doing and that we had a program for that. We've not had that kind of problem for a long time, and I think that we could make a strong case. For the state bond bill funds, there's some similarity to that, but that has a lot more related to political will than the program open space does. And I think, you know, we've heard some feedback from state legislators. There'll be some back and forth as we go forward. Again, if we're doing something that's a good plan, I think we've got a state delegation that's been very supportive to us, and they could try to help. If we're not sure, then I think that sends a different signal. And they are going to look for money.
Any other questions for information? Terry?
Yes, I have one other question for information. We, in recent years, have used program open space money for work here on the community center. Historically, we kind of used open space money for open space projects. And we didn't hear anything about any potential open space projects tonight. Are there any that are in the, that are also on the menu of possibilities that we might want to spend the money on?
Yes, there are actually two projects that the council, through its prior actions, meaning the resolutions that are referred to, have allocated funds for two park projects. One is Jacky A. Park and one is Jackson Boyd Park. As I noted under special consideration, and Councilmember Simmons, thank you for bringing this up because I neglected to mention this, I did want to just note for the council's benefit is that we are still basically going through the design process for Jackson Boyd. As of October, we were at the 30% design stage. And I did want to note that the amount that the council had allocated from the FY '08 POS allocation appears that it will be insufficient to actually do what is needed at that park. There are some slope issues and there's a lot of accessibility issues, if you're familiar with that site. We are still going through that design process. I do not have a final number. In talking to the Director of Public Works, however, I do think that there will be an opportunity for the council to consider allocating some of the FY '09 POS allocations for that park. But those are the only two that are on the list. I did have some discussions with Ms. Breakaway if there were any other parks out there that needed some work. And she actually felt like we were in pretty good shape. And we are talking a significant amount of money with relatively small parks. I'm not sure that, if you look at the city's entire city-owned park system, that you could really think of what we're going to spend $1.2 million on just general, like?
Yeah, if I can address that. And a number of years ago, we got about $100,000 a year. It was a fairly regular amount. And we had a list of parks and we were kind of working through them and it made sense. Then we got some big increases. There were some real contributions made to the program open space program. And so we were able to do some of these other things with it. And we were able to catch up on our parks. So we did make process, you know, we did make some progress when that happened.
Who owns the Sligo Mill property and who would put money into that to try to resolve some of the issues there?
On Orchard Avenue?
Yeah. Well, the...
On Sligo Mill Road?
Doesn't matter. The answer's Park and Planning.
All right.
We manage it, but they own it.
And so they pay for it? Any fix?
Very little is being paid for it right now.
Right, but they are the ones whose pockets we want to pay for the items over there.
We are, no, we are on the hook to do any improvements in that park. There was a memorandum of understanding.
Now, which one?
The Sligo, the natural area, the Sligo Mill-Poplar Mill section. The park that is sometimes called...
Orchard Park.
Orchard Park or Sligo Mill Overlook or whatever. That's a Park and Planning park, and they are responsible for that.
It's also called Dr. Schmidt Park?
No, that's a different.
Oh, that's the other, sorry.
All right, and there's...
And somebody, Dan?
On that, on the Sligo Mill Park, between below Sligo Mill and above Poplar, or Ford, there have been concerns about that park for a good long time. And we are managed, we are responsible for managing that natural area.
That's right.
And I've not seen estimates on options to improve it. And I've also, I also see in here, I think I understand what's that issue with program open space funding. At the bottom of the first page of the background, it says, "There have been discussions of other improvements to the community center over the years." And then it goes on to describe some of those improvements. And I didn't know if all of those improvements were appropriate for program open space or not. And whether they are or not, I think it's important for us on the council to understand all of the sprucing up or finishing off or tightening up projects that are on the table. I'm a little, I don't know quite where I am on this because this focuses on program open space more than other expenditures we might be, want to incur to get ourselves to a position we want to get to. So I'm a little concerned that... So I'm a little concerned that, I'm looking at a portion of something that's not...
I don't think there's a pot of money for it.
Pardon?
I don't think there's a pot of money for those other sources, for those other projects at this turn.
For the other projects. I think it would be valuable for us to understand all the things that are on the table, even though, in this instance, it's kind of a cobbling together of program open space to do a specific project. I guess I'm afraid that things are going to get left out, that we really want to do, that will be coming back to us over time.
That's why we put it here.
Yeah.
Since to get, to begin to start that discussion.
Okay.
And that's why I wanted to get questions about what else we need, because it may tell us that we need more information before we can say, well, it should be one, two, and I have a question about more information as well. I had similar thoughts about what other projects might be out there for program open space funds. And one of the ones that I think hasn't necessarily been kind of included in this possible more information, it was mentioned, but I think we need to understand where we are with it, is the Jackie Park project. Is that in FY08 schedule?
It's, yes, it's, it's an approved project in the FY08 budget.
And so that there's POS money designated for that in this year?
Right. It was specifically mentioned, and I apologize, Councilmember Williams, I don't remember if it was the 2006 or the 2007 resolution, but the council by resolution has specifically set aside a portion of the funding for both Jackson Boyd and Jackie A., and both of those are included in the FY08 budget.
Okay. So I, I think it would be good to have a sense of, you know, we, we got the sense that the Jackson Boyd is going to need more money than we thought it was, whether, you know, what, kind of answer the same question for, you say Jackie A., I say Jackie, potato, If, if we have that information, or for any other similar type of thing with POS funding, so that we kind of have a lay of the land on exactly where we are on that, I think that'll be helpful in providing the context.
Yeah, all the parts.
Yeah, what I can do that would be helpful, and it seems like there's a lot of interest just in the parks generally, is I can ask Ms. Braithwaite to provide just a little history in terms of what, what parks have been renovated, and how recently, and when she anticipates any other parks might be coming up in the schedule.
Okay. And then one question about the costs for the auditorium. We've got the, the, the presentation that we had on option D, but am I correct that we don't have any potential operational cost increases associated with that?
I would not say it's fair that there won't be any. I think one of the things, and I have a couple of the auditorium committee members who are here, but my understanding in talking to the staff is that there's an acknowledgement that there's different models of how a renovated council chambers auditorium could be operated. I don't believe, because the committee was so focused on working with the architect on the feasibility study, as was staff, that those discussions have been very detailed. And that would be something that I would suggest needs to be done before the council would make any type of definitive conclusion on this matter, is that I think you would need to have an understanding of what the operating cost might be.
Yeah, and I think even, even if we just get early on as part of a, you know, a packet of additional information, just a first blush range on that, it might be helpful in understanding our options. Understanding that if we, if we go in that direction, that we need to refine it. Any more general questions? Okay, Terry.
Thank you. Sounds like we faded from general questions anyway.
Yep.
I just wanted to, to run through my priorities very quickly. You know, I, I kind of focus on, when we're talking about this building or the community center, I'm kind of focused on functionality and use. So things like the facade and the Grand Avenue access, although they may be important, I think are further down on the list to me than increasing, making sure that we have things completed and working, functioning well. And maybe that includes the air conditioners on the third floor, and maybe it obviously includes some things that we can't pay for with program open space money. But again, that's kind of my focus on things, on spending. And then, as I said, it's not just making the building sound, but it's also on increasing the usage of what we've built. I'm still terribly disappointed with the usage that we're seeing in this building at this, at this point in time. And so I, I have to question spending more money to build more resources for more activities when we're not fully using those resources that we've already put in place and spent the money for already. And so the, the use of the community center is part of it. And then I have to tell you, coming from Ward Four, what I hear from my constituents is, where is the gymnasium? And it isn't so much, where's the building, but it's where's the programs? We have historically had gym programs in the city that have been well-attended and very popular with the community members, but we're not seeing those. And so again, I, I'm disappointed that the, the gymnasium has just fallen completely into history. I think that because we had a setback with the estimates for what it would cost to put it right here next to the building, doesn't mean that we shouldn't try to overcome that obstacle in some way. And maybe it doesn't mean go out and get more money so that we can build it there, but maybe it means we need to look at what are the options? And I think this council should be looking at what are the options to bring those gym programs to the community. And that might be working with the county to get better access to the buildings, it might be picking a different location that doesn't have the same problems that here on the side of the building has. But somehow, we need to fill that initial mission that we had, which is to provide the gym programs to the community. I will also tell you that I do have a priority to knock this bias down and, and let the community use this auditorium as a performance space when we're not here, and we're not here most nights, other than Monday night. I, I'm not sure that it, that I would support until we have the gym problem resolved, I'm not sure that I would support spending a large amount of money to turn this into a performing arts space. But I would like to see space on this platform, I can't call it a stage, where, where the kids can come up here and play music and have people in to listen, or where the adults can come in and, and, you know, perform whatever performances that, that the community can, can have. I have questions that I think we need to look at before we actually spend money on this as a performing arts space, one of which is, you know, what's happening at Blair? And what are they doing? And how is that going to impact the need for performance spaces here in this area? I think, from what I've seen, we need, you know, someplace that people can come and give performances. I'm just less enthusiastic about all the good acoustics and, and all the other things that are nice, but they're lower down on my priority list than having space for the community to come in and do things.
Other comments? Josh, and then Callie.
I'll let you go first.
All right.
Gosh, it's hard to know where to start. Let's start with the Jackson Boyd Park. Good, Daryl's not here, because we're surprised to see that, I know we talked about this before, I was surprised to see the changed figure was $165,000 instead of $65,000.
That's correct. I had, had the same reaction, Councilmember Clay. While you say that's not a final figure, that was at the 30% design stage, but wanted to share what information we have in hand.
Wow. That's a significant amount of money for a little pocket park. But, okay. So then the other thing is that, it's sort of ironic, because I actually voted against going to the state and asking for bond funding for the gym. And then, as I recall, I asked if we couldn't please ask for it for the community center instead of specifically for the gym, just in case the gym didn't work out. But I went to the state because once everybody else had voted to move forward with it, I didn't want to make a half-hearted attempt to go ask for the money, so I went to support Mayor Porter, actually, and Suzanne Ledo. We had a great song and dance, and it was really fun. And Suzanne prepared a, a top 10 David Letterman-style countdown that was amusing. But I guess, I feel like, you know, we went, we asked for the money, we received the money. I would like to spend the money, and I think that the risk that we'll lose the money is relatively high. And so I, I would like to go forward with looking at how we can expend that money on the community center. And I guess I'm not as concerned about whether we spend it on air handlers or on this auditorium project, although I guess if I had my preference, I'd rather deal with the air handlers and other ways that we've discussed, and go forward with the, with the performance space auditorium project. I'm very supportive of that. We have a good sense of how much it's going to cost, and it, and it does seem within reach. And the last thing that I am going to say is that there's a lot more pieces that cross over the health and welfare mission of the Adventist Hospital folks than just a gymnasium. And I think that if we have to go back and ask for a change in the use of that money, that I don't think that's difficult to do. I, I worked a lot with Kaiser in Oakland, California, and they actually developed a whole health and fitness program that was based on kids that were engaging in performances that they were then sharing with other folks in the community that were about healthcare. And there's, there's a lot of, there's a lot of different things that, that would cross over that, and I think that we just need to go and, and make that request in, in a way that, that makes sense. And, and in the future, I hope that when there is negotiation with the major employee and a major entity in our community, that it occurs from the council, and that is council-directed, so that the way that we get offers of funding and monies from our, our major entities in the community are led by the, the council. And with that in mind, I, I think I'd also like to see us put together the land use committee soon, so that we have these activities being led by the council and not, not being left to smaller citizen groups, however well-intentioned in how much good work that they do. Because I think that had the council maybe been more involved in that, 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 that might have had, we might have had a different structure of an, an agreement that might have been more flexible and worked for us better.
Josh?
So there are a number of issues connected here. I would agree that I, I would like a better sense of what all the options are that we can spend the money on. So if there are a list of park improvements that are out there that we'd be thinking about spending this money on, I'd want to know what those options are, just so I make a choice and advocate, sure, with full information. You know, I, I think the, the second issue is, is hard for me, because I talk to a lot of people up who live in Hodges Heights on Grand Avenue. And in some ways, by taking the money that's allocated for the gym and saying we're going to spend it on the auditorium, where if not killing the gym, at least acknowledging that we're going to table the gym for a significant amount of time. And they put a lot of time and energy and effort, like many people did, into things related to the gym, but specifically on how the gym would look and impact their community. And at the same time that we're saying, okay, we're going to spend the money here, and we're, the gym's not going to happen, and we're going to leave the back of the community center looking like it is, it's sort of the double whammy for those individuals. In terms of turning this into a performance space, in theory and concept, I'd really like that, a space that we can control, and we can have programming for kids and recreational activities, and musicians. Like Mr. Councilmember Siemens, I, I think that a lot of that will have to do with the quality of the programming as opposed to the specifics of the space. But I would like to know sort of the other performance spaces of this size that are available in the area. You know, there was an article recently about the old Blair High School space, and whether people are trying to raise money to redo that auditorium. Montgomery College is building this massive performing arts space. I'm not sure when it's supposed to open, but, you know, the college has frequently been very open to us using their space for different things, more open than our county school system. So I'd want to get, have a sense of what the, you know, what are the competing spaces out there, both from, what are the other options we could use, but also, I imagine there may be times where we would actually want to try and charge for the space so we could make some revenue, and what are the other competitors out there that might be charging for space? So that would be important. I definitely think we need some sort of public process around this. I, I've seen a fair bit of activity on listserv, but also I've talked to some people, and, you know, people have brought up this issue with me, of all of a sudden, it's the issue of we're going to lose the money, and we have to make a decision with a gun to our head, sort of. And, you know, I know that a gymnasium is a very complex thing, but people still have a feeling of a sort of bait and switch, and, and they're wondering if that's happening all over again. As much as we say, and I truly believe that redoing the space is about performance space, there's some element of that that is viewed as redoing the space where we spend one evening a week, and, and, and we could be accused of using that for our benefit as opposed to the greater community's benefit. I would, maybe it's that I need to call Sheila Higginson or talk to Heather about it, but I would want to understand the political realities a little bit more about what really the risk is of losing the money. And then lastly, I, I think we should move forward with having, whether it's the staff puts together a plan of really trying to resolve the conflicts with the school system around access to these other facilities. Because I, partially because I think it's a shame, but also because I really do think, we talked about spending all these millions of dollars on gymnasium, or a million dollars in here for, for space. And I know that space is used sometimes, but we really don't have a good relationship with the county, and I know that's not our fault necessarily, but there's got to be a way to, whether, and maybe we need to play a role in that, of trying to work with the electors on the county council and with the school board. But there's got to be a way to, to have a more streamlined and user-friendly and collaborative process for those spaces. And I would feel a lot more comfortable sort of saying, well, we're tabling the gym for a while because we have, you know, partially because we have access to these other things. And then again, it's not the space specifically, but it's having the really good programming in, in those spaces.
You're kind of getting into the next attendant item.
Yes.
I know, they're, they're very...
We brought it up, but the other option is, you know, and I actually want to have the pool remain a pool for a variety of reasons, but you could probably advocate with the state and county that you want to use the program open space to do the capital improvements to the pool, or to do the capital improvements to change it into a gym. So that's another option we haven't even talked about for the money.
About the, about this space, I look at it as hugely underused, and I, I can't wait to see it changed so that it is a place where people who have something to say or perform in the city have a place to do it. And my cursory experience, not, not knowing about Blair, I don't know what, what they offer, but Tacoma Park as a destination, if you come by the metro, there's really nowhere to go to see a lot, to sit with a reasonably sized group of people and see something happen. There just isn't. There's hope for the Tacoma Theater, but it's, it's a long ways from being a reality. There's hope for the Tacoma Theater, but it's a long ways from being a reality. And so I'm a proponent of having this space redone, even though, as you say, Councilmember Wright, there's, it's a thorny path to get there, perhaps, if you really try to think of all the options. And like you, I think that it's good that we have, the next thing on the discussion, the recommendation on the Piney Branch Pool, because that is another thorny path, but it may be a way to get the hospital to make good on their commitment. And I remember thinking, although I know it wasn't a link, that when they made that $150,000 commitment, it was in lieu of a pilot, in lieu of a payment, what is it? I guess you can't say in lieu of a pilot, because a pilot is a payment in lieu of taxes, but it was, there was that sense that it was a pilot. And I don't want that to go away, because I think that as the largest property owner in our town, they have a commitment to our city and our budget to pay their fair share, so not wanting to alienate them. So I know it's a complicated mix. I'm glad we are where we are, even though it's complicated.
Yes, sure.
Well, one of the principles I'd like to see us follow is to have facilities and programs that are as close in as possible, so that we don't have to depend on automobiles to get everywhere, going hither and yon to get to an athletic facility, a field, or a performing arts space. The region is only going to get more crowded in terms of cars, gas is only going to get more expensive, and in order to build this sense of community that some people in town from the survey clearly feel is not present where they live, we need these facilities. So I would like to add to the mix, the rec center on New Hampshire Avenue, which is a shambles now, and represents a place that has not always gotten a lot of attention from the city. It's in an area where crime is high, people are afraid to go out, there's gang activity. The county, of course, gives us money for this and should give us more, but we certainly should consider what, if anything, to do to enhance that. And then...
And just let me ask the question, so that you can provide the answer? And who owns that facility? And who is responsible for it?
The county.
For its shape?
The parking planning owns the building, and we operate through a contract with Montgomery County Recreation.
Right.
But essentially, the owner and the money is the county?
Is the county. And I think, you know, in the spirit of working with partners throughout the region to find innovative ways to share the facility and make them available to more people, we need to pursue that. We've talked about getting together with them, speaking about joint programming, talking to the owners of the new New Hampshire or Tacoma overlook, outlook, or no look, whatever it's called. But those two, you know, huge towers on New Hampshire Avenue, they've expressed an interest. I mean, let's think outside the box and figure, you know, who really will stand up with us and pay their fair share, their rightful share, in order to make that place not a shambles? And so then, of course, we have to look at what other kinds of programs don't we have that would better round out the recreational performing arts mix. Clearly, this space as a venue for people to come and to perform in the days when it's dark, which is every day except Monday nights, seems to me a sensible way of using some of those funds. And of course, if a gym is doable, where the swimming pool exists now, thought and attention ought to be paid to that. The problem is, is that we're kind of out of sync with the monies being, you know, not permanent there for us to have all the time we need to make decisions, and at the same time, there's a lot of controversy over how, if at all, that facility ought to serve a purpose other than the swimming pool that it is now. And then, you know, if we're having trouble with all these other stakeholders, the school district has been one of the most difficult partners or potential partners, and how are we going to partner with them by proposing to spend some money on converting it into something that it's not now? And then finally, what I'd like to see, and some of the colleagues I think have said this as well, is some kind of visual presentation of all of the different options, all of the different monies that are available, and of the options, I would hope that the, what we could do or contribute to the rec center on New Hampshire Avenue would be included in that, and then the time in which this money, you know, may or may not be around. I think that's helpful, too. When is it going to lapse? Is it a two-year, a three-year, a four-year, or whatever? And then that would give us a better idea of how to compare these things in our own mind and how to prioritize them appropriately.
If I can just, I've been jotting down notes as people have been talking, and I just want to add a couple of things, just in the order I've got them jotted down. I will try and get a little bit better sense of the state bond fund and how that might be, you know, scooped up by the state or available to us, what kind of a process they're looking for. I have a tentative lunch date with Delegate Hickson on Friday, and Jerry Stock's lunch tomorrow. I'm doing lunch with a lot of people. And I will...
I hope you're not paying.
No, I'm not, and the ethics law addresses that. So I will try and get further information from at least both of those folks from this discussion. It struck me that in some ways, I think we've just kind of pulled together one of the possible priorities for this council for the coming year of looking at and addressing in an overall way the facilities, the shape those facilities are in, the kinds of uses for those facilities, and kind of an overall approach to how we might want to begin to address those needs in a short-term, medium-term, long-term fashion.
So you're also talking about public works facility?
Whatever it might be, because in my mind, it's also tied to the kind of the argument that I've been putting out there for some months now about redevelopment, and it's all about redevelopment of existing infrastructure and how to deal with it, and it's public and it's private, and it's that overall approach so that people know that we have some sense of where we want to go and what the priorities are. Just the point that was brought up about some people might be thinking that it's, if we do anything with this room, that it's really about kind of feathering our own nest here at the dais. I would just say that in many ways, the easiest thing for us to do from our own selfish point of view is leave it the way it is. It's been working. It has its difficulties, but for us, we're here. We've got what we need. It's all about making it available for other people to use. Something else was brought up about the possibility of having something where we can maybe charge for some space. I'll just say that my sense is that every time we've talked about possibly charging for space, we've backed off of it and essentially said, oh, we don't want to charge anybody. So if we ever went to a charging somebody for space model, I would be very surprised that's counter to the whole direction that this council, the previous councils have moved whenever the topic has come up. Also about the possibility of the expanded sense of what Washington Adventist Hospital might consider to be under their mission in any possible donation to projects that we're doing, I would point out to those of us who, remind those of us who went, and point out to those of us if there weren't any, I don't remember, who didn't go to the 100th Anniversary Gala, that the, what seemed to be important to the hospital in putting forth that effort was not only the food that was provided and the sense of how that was healthy, but the performances, which were a mixture of athletic and performance. It was a a cappella group, so that their sense of kind of how that fit in their mission seemed to encompass something that would include an auditorium. I'll leave it at that. Karen?
May I add a few things? You know, when we've talked about this and modifying this room, again, I think we've looked at a lower price option. I don't think we've looked at the bare bones option, which I would like to be able to consider. And as far as us feathering our cap by doing this, I think the argument that I hear more is that, you know, we talked about a gymnasium, but then wanted to prioritize having an art room first and having a dance studio first, and now it's about having a performing arts studio first, that there's, that's the issue that I hear more about the council trying to improve our own lot. And then lastly, I'll just say that I am not interested in us going into business, into the recreation business for, as a way to earn money for the city. I think we should leave that to the business entities and, you know, provide space for the community.
And I'll just come back with two quick ones. One in response to the, what you say you hear about the kind of how things progressed, and it went to the art room and other things before the gym. My recollection of that is that there was a certain order to how you could do the project, and it had to be phased, and the phasing worked that way, it didn't necessarily work reversing it. And the note that I had down here that I couldn't quite figure out, that was what I wanted to say, was one thing I did like about the process that we've been taking so far with any discussion of improvements to the auditorium is not necessarily a, here's what we want, how do we do it, but here are the things that we want, and here's the amount of money that we think we have, make whatever comes back to us fit that budget, and that's what option D did, and I think that's recognizing some of the lessons that we learned from the larger community center project, recognizing some of the pieces that didn't necessarily get included in terms of the architect's fees and some of the permits and all that kind of stuff, just to say, we have to recognize that that has to go in, and so that whatever we do going forward in coming up with any prices for any alternatives, I think we need to always remember that lesson and be careful in making sure that we recognize and cover contingencies and understand how projects go and the way that they're funded, so that we keep that lesson involved in however we approach it.
And another lesson buried not so deep in the survey data is that fully half of the response to the survey said that they would, that they supported the, well, 100%. I mean, I don't know what the percentage was, but the majority of them said they would, they supported a gym, and roughly half of them said they would support paying $100 tax on assessed value of $400,000. So the notion that many of us had after the last go-round, that we would be run out of town even for suggesting bonding the city further for the construction of the gym, it doesn't seem to be true. And so that's something to keep in the back of our mind as we go forward, that the, you know, there is support, a lot of support out there for it.
Just remember, not everybody that filled out the survey votes.
That's true.
I'll run part out of town on my own, but not all the way.
Okay. Does, Barb, you think you have some direction you need on what to come back for further discussion on this?
I think so. I did want to just clarify that certainly Suzanne and I can talk to the staff regarding Councilmember Wright's question about whether or not program open space funds could be used for some of the facade improvements. I just want to just clarify for the council, we would not be able, if that is the case or if the council wanted estimates, that's not something the staff's going to be able to do on its own. We would actually need to, you know, work with the cost estimator and with an architect. So we're not going that route until I'm sure that there is council support, but we can at least ask the question about the funding.
Okay. And I think we've had a good discussion on this, and we've been talking about it an hour, and we have one final item that we've kind of bled over into, and we've had two people in the audience waiting patiently for us to get to that, three items, maybe even three. And so we'll move on to the last item, which is discussion of the process to develop recommendations on the Piney Branch Pool. And Suzanne is here, and we also have Sue Katz Miller, who's president of the Piney Branch PTA, and Howard Cohn is here. And so if you all feel the need to vent or give some comments, just come on up to the table, or you can sit where you are. Suzanne, go ahead.
Thanks. Well, I appreciate the discussion on the previous item, because I think it does lead into this topic. You know, this is one of these places where if there were a lot of money out there, the choice would be a lot easier. The, for the background for those who are not familiar, the Piney Branch Elementary School has a pool, indoor swimming pool attached to it. It's been operated by Montgomery County Department of Recreation since 1971. For about five years, it was operated under contract with the YMCA, but they stopped operating it, and the pool has been closed since September. There's several options that people have been talking about. People obviously were very upset to see the pool closed. There's been a petition that had many hundreds of names saying reopen the pool. There's also been some study by a working group of staff to determine kind of what some of the options are to deal with it, what kind of cost implications there would be to fix it, to open it, or to do something else with the space. The two major alternatives that have been discussed are reopening it as a pool or converting it into a gymnasium, that the actual dimensions of that space are similar to that of a gym, and it could be used that way. There may be some other options for the space, but those are the two that have been discussed the most. There's real questions about who would pay to fix the pool or to convert to a gym. It is a Montgomery County facility. Nevertheless, we're all aware that Montgomery County is having money problems, as most of the rest of the state, and they're trying to decide what their priorities are for funding. It has been urged that the city council and the Tacoma Park community, if we're going to come up with some recommendation, do so quickly by, say, mid-February, so as to get into the county council's process for the capital improvement program in the upcoming There's interest in establishing some kind of public process to think through the issues and to come up with a recommendation from the city council to the county council. The, I'd like to get some feedback from you. There's a couple of things. There may be some points of information that are needed. I know we've been gathering some things. I've heard, I've seen some emails, so we appreciate those things, but we would like to make sure that if there's some points, some facts that are needed to help structure the discussion, that those are out. One of the things that I'm concerned about, and I think was reflected in some of the information in the survey and in the discussion with the gym, is that there's real differences. It's one thing to say, yes, you want a facility. It's another thing to say you want to pay for it, or how much you want to pay for it. And as we try to structure a recommendation to the county council, you know, I know that you're going to want to try to understand what the sentiment is that's out there as best you can. And for me, I tried to write out for me the kinds of things that I would like to know from people, you know, I would like to hear that would give me a sense of what the community If the city council decides to advocate for reopening the Piney Branch Pool, you know, you might want to ask people, for those people who say that that's what they'd like to see, is it something that needs to be paid for by Montgomery County or another entity, or is it so important that the city of Tacoma Park should contribute to that? And I would be interested in hearing those different points of view. Similarly, for the same question about should it be converted into a gymnasium, are those, you know, is that something that we should make Montgomery County do because it's a Montgomery County facility? Or should it be something that's so important that the city put in something to it? to it? You know, do you advocate for turning the space into a gym only if nobody will come forward to pay for operating it as a pool? And that's, I think that's going to be an interesting discussion point. We've heard today that there's some possibilities of other recreational or facilities in the area. How do we use the schools? How do we use Montgomery College and Columbia Union College? How do we use potentially the Washington Adventist Hospital space if the hospital moves? Should we be advocating for, you know, should we be spending time as a staff advocating for some of these uses, and do we put these choices on hold while we're out there lobbying to get access, better access to the schools for certain of these uses? And another thing that I think has come up is, you know, how would you use the pool if it were reopened? There's been criticism that it wasn't marketed well. Should it be geared primarily as an asset to Piney Branch Elementary School to make it an attractive school? Should it perhaps in any kind of renovation, whether as a pool or as a gymnasium, should it be segregated physically from the school so that it could be better used by the public during a school day during times? Or you don't have the problems of in the evening, people entering the entire school building who, you know, supposedly went in to use the pool or the gym? One of the things that came out from the working group, and I don't know that it actually came out in the report, but in the discussions, is that it's a relatively small pool compared to some of the massive pool complexes that get built. In that way, it's actually fairly good for therapeutic pool use. So there may be certain things that it's, it's more appropriate for certain uses than, than other uses, and it would be interesting to know how that should be played. It's also was rented by swim teens in the past, you know, is that something that's a good use of it, or are other uses more desirable in the community? All of those things are, I think, important things to hear from people, and one of the things that had concerned me up till this evening was the sense that, you know, whichever item facility gets mentioned first, auditorium or whatever, people say, yeah, we want that, and kind of not recognizing how does that fit in with these other facility needs. And I, and I'm happy to hear that the council would take that on as a project, kind of thinking through the facilities that we have or that we may have access to and putting some priorities onto it. We do need to have some kind of a public process shortly if we are to meet the county council's mid-February request date. And I don't have a recommendation for you, other than I think you're going to need to schedule some time for that, but how the word gets out to people. We do have a newsletter going out relatively soon, but we've had some opportunity to get some notice in there. The newsletter's well read, we found, that's good. But we do need to move rapidly if you, if you plan on choosing a date for some kind of a public forum or other kind of process. And I'm interested to hear what information you need and what ideas you might have for that process.
And when's the deadline for the newsletter, when does it come out?
The deadline was yes, was today, but we have a little bit of flexibility in how we get that in. It would come out, what, the end of next week?
It usually, we aim to have it out right around the first of the month.
Yeah.
So that we could advertise something for a week into February if the work?
Yes. I think it would be fair.
And I would suggest that our options for that are either a public hearing as part of a council meeting, or some other way of doing it, and I've talked about other ways of trying to get input and getting into some of the nuances of things. So I'd be interested to hear if people think it would be valuable to have people, I'll show my bias, people lined up in here at a microphone to give us three minutes' worth, or an opportunity to discuss some things in another fashion. Comments? Questions?
I do think we should have a process that moves fairly quickly. I'm in favor of keep, I've thought a lot about it, in favor of keeping it as a pool, but there, you know, if somebody had cool arguments, I might be persuaded. I would like to hear from the public about it, but something pretty, I think, timing is, time is important.
Whatever we do, it's going to involve the inter, the relationships between a bunch of other entities, and how that plays out for the county council, I don't have a clue, not being a neophyte myself. But there's Montgomery County Recreation, and there's the ICB, and there's the school system, and there's the county council, and there's Tacoma Park, and Tacoma Park's Rec Department, and it gets, it's going to get messy fast. So if we can, I mean, I'm all for a public process to get us, to get us of a, of a single mind, if that's possible. But I, I just, I'm confident that it's going to get messy when it, when we kick it back up to the county, and I'm curious to know how that's going to play out.
Colleen?
Well, I feel like, I've heard, I've heard a lot from folks, but I still think that we need to give people an additional opportunity to comment, but I, I think part of the, the nature of this is that it is complex, and it is a very strategic activity. So let's say, for example, we went through a public process, and the result of the public process was that we ranked the city's, or the community's interests, and the rankings were that, you know, the first priority was for a pool, and the second priority ended up being for a gymnasium, which is not particularly how I think it would go, but let's say it went that way. And then we published that, and we then moved forward to the, to the county council, and they see, you know, that there was a, there's a second priority for the gymnasium. We already know they really don't want to have anything to do with the pool, but they would, for their own personal purposes, like a gymnasium. And I think sometimes it's really hard to communicate to the public what some of the politics of that are, and that it doesn't mean a gymnasium for us to use. And so I guess what I would advocate for is more of the information collection, get what people's bottom lines are if we can on the issues, and allow some, allow some leeway for a more professional negotiation. And part of, you know, it's so budget-related, and I think it's something that the mayor and the city manager and no more than two council people can, can go along and, and participate in. And I, I think that the end result of a process like that is probably going to be closer to getting us what we really want. The challenge from that is the, is the transparency and the communication of, of the, the message, but I think that the ability to free, more freely negotiate around a set of, of parameters. For example, I, I'm not crazy about spending money on a county facility, because their track record in honoring their agreements with us, as far as I can tell, is not really great. And I think, you know, we should come armed with, with what we've got. How much are we really paying in recreation tax to the county and getting, you know, almost nothing back on? Do we own any of the property that that school is sitting on? Do we have any really good information about what their initial promise was to us in the, in the 70s about what was going to happen? And how do we look at that, not only related to the pool, but to the gymnasium and the health center for the community, and, you know, the other kinds of things that we're supposed to go along with that? So that's my 10 cents.
Sure. I'm very curious, as Colleen is, and I think we've both asked for this information. I know you guys are probably looking into it for sort of the history of it. I, I also think we need a public process, although I'm pretty certain where I stand. I never make my mind up until I hear as many voices as possible, but to me, it's just a little ridiculous. What the county, what the county is trying to do to us is make us choose between a pool and a gym. I don't want a pool or gym, I want both. And, you know, you can, you can continue to get it used, you can stand up at point, some point and say you're not going to take it anymore. And the reality is, what they're probably trying to do is get us to somehow split whatever costs are associated with either option in some way. And again, my perspective is, we're not going to take that anymore. Let's march the, I don't know how many it was, 100 kids, let's take a day off with, from school with the kids, go to the county council with the 100, 200, however many kids we, we can bring, and let them hear what the, what the kids want and need in their school. And, yes, I know the county is having budget issues, but we're having budget issues in Tacoma Park right now. People pay 50% more taxes than someone who lives in an unincorporated house, and it simply has to do with the rebates not being fair on what we're already doing. So it seems totally preposterous to me that we are going to, we would some way divide up and sign up for more cost for something that they really should be providing. It should be, you know, they should make the capital improvements to make the pool run properly, so it's not too cold and people want to use it. And it should be, first be for the kids who are in, during the, during the school hours, and then they should either run effective programming, which we will help them publicize, or they should give us the money to run the programming, which, which we'll publicize. And, you know, I, I'm open to discussing who holds the, you know, responsibility for running the program or publicizing. I'm not a big fan of the idea that we're going to discuss who's going to pay for something that's a county facility the county should staff, the county should run. So give us the pool, we'll continue to work out it and figure out a way to get ourselves a gym. That's, that's my, where I'm going in now. I know it's complex and there's political issues about funding, but it seems pretty simple to me in that way. And, you know, we're known as a city that bites for what's fair and just, and I think that's where it's, to me, getting to the point where it's about fairness and justice, and not about something special for Tacoma Park.
And if I can just add right there, that for me, it's become very clear that the issue of the current, currently closed Piney Branch pool is, as you say, not really about us maneuvering ourselves or allowing the county to maneuver us into a position of saying, well, do we want a pool or do we want a gym? It's about access to the facilities that we need in this area and that we deserve just as many people in other areas of the county get them, and that we pay for and that we don't get. And it's all about access, and we don't have to maneuver ourselves into a position. We can take a position that we feel is the right one to take and makes the right points and pursue it from that viewpoint and refuse to be boxed in. Karen?
Thank you, Mayor Williams. I think in an ideal world, my ideal world, Tacoma Park City could take over the, the pool and run the program, and, and I think it would be highly used and, and something we could charge a reasonable fee for the use so that we could pay for the operation of it. That's an ideal world, unfortunately, that's not the world we live in right now. We're still struggling with our community center to, to get the programs working productively here, and, and so I, I would hesitate for the city to, to say, yes, we would just take over operation of the pool at this point in time. But I certainly agree with Councilmember Wright that, that the county has an obligation to provide for the residents in this end of the county, in the same manner they provide for residents in other areas of the county. And I think that that has to do with a swimming facility and a gymnasium. I think we have county gymnasiums here, we have some access to. I think we could work more closely with the county and address our, our, some of our gymnasium needs. But I think the pool needs go well beyond what's needed by the schoolchildren that are there during the daytimes, there are community members who have historically used the pool, but not nearly the number of people who have said that they wished they had known the pool was there so they could use it, that they would have used it, and I think a, a well-managed facility would, would be used much more than what we've seen in the past. So again, I, I kind of support Councilmember Wright's suggestion that we need to be aggressive in approaching the council to keep the pool as a pool, to do whatever maintenance is needed to get it into shape, and then to provide for the management of that pool that runs it like a business. A not-for-profit business, I will add.
I was going to ask what we might want to put in the newsletter, but I think first I'll ask Sue Katz Miller if she wants to make any comments. Especially since you've been here for so long, I would hate for you to sit there and then go, huh?
No, I, I, I wanted to just hear you all, and I, I thank you for the support you've been expressing, and I just want to say, it is our only pool, and if we lose it, we're not going to get another one. My understanding is that we have at least three county council members who are ready to go to bat to get us the funding. They're just waiting to hear from us that we're clear that, that we want it, and I think we're, we're moving in that direction. There's no way that the city should be paying for it, and I, I never thought that, and I don't even think that, that some of those county council members think that. So they, I think they're going to try to get the funding. I mean, now with the budget, I don't know, but, no one's asking the city to pay for it, and, and it should, so it shouldn't be in competition with the other, you know, important items that you've been discussing, is my feeling. Citizens have been walking up to me and saying they're willing to pay memberships, that's how strongly they feel about this. Again, I don't think that they should have to, because I think they're paying the taxes, and the county should just be paying it, but, but they feel that way. Even if it were walled off and the school had limited access to it, it would still be really an essential part of the identity of our ugly little school, and the school is an anchor on Maple Avenue, it's an anchor of our public school system, and it really does affect the city, the city's image, the, the buy-in to our whole public school system that, that makes us a vital city, and so it's important. Thank you.
I guess I would propose that if we want to get public input, we advertise in the news, in the newsletter that's about to go out for a public hearing on the, I think the choices are either the, probably the 11th is a regular meeting, the 4th would probably be too early for, it would be like right after people get the newsletter.
Yeah, the 11th probably would. We, we would, you know, I think that the county council would want us to respond relatively quickly after that.
Right. So, so maybe even a public hearing on the 11th and some kind of a sense of what we're going to send to the county council that evening. We, we, in the past, usually not like to kind of do the discussion and decision the night of a public hearing. We could hold it off a week, we could do it that night, but do we want to have the hearing for the 11th? And, and maybe I'll suggest that given the hour, that anybody who has any suggestions for language of what should go in the newsletter should email those to Suzanne tomorrow and copy the rest of us, and we'll put our two cents in so that the language can be ready ASAP.
Do we need any factual background to go along with the announcement of the public hearing, or are we just going to say, public hearing on pool?
I think at this point, there's not a, there wouldn't be a lot of factual information to include with that notice.
I think you need to have at least a notice that there is a pool at the Piney Branch Elementary.
There needs to be a little bit of a description, but I, I think that it, it may start getting difficult to, to really advertise.
Which path, right.
Yeah.
Colleen?
I'd rather do it on the 4th, but is it possible? I'd rather do it on the 4th, but is it possible that we could push our start time earlier so that, and do the hearing first so we could have input from, from kids and parents?
Absolutely.
Want to go with Monday, the 11th, start time, special start time at 7 o'clock?
Well, they're, they're...
5:30?
No. No, I, I think between 6:30 and 7 is, is fine, you know, they're, if we, if we cut to the chase and, and do the public hearing first, before we do comments and the city managers' reports and all that, because they're, those kids are eight, nine, and 10 years old.
6:45, public hearing at 6:45.
Okay.
Yes? I'm seeing yeses, I'm not seeing no's?
So 6:45, public hearing?
6:45, public hearing. And comments about facts or particular language for the announcement in the newsletter as referred to a minute ago. Okay, thank you. We're adjourned.
Thank you.